Recording and we are now live. Mr. Crow, the meeting is yours.
Uh, I'm gonna call the board of the County Zoning Board to review for tonight, October 7th. Uh, I'm gonna have the secretary, please do a roll call.
Eddie Ionati?
Yeah.
Russ Lockleid?
Here.
Keith Cludier?
Here.
Bob Crow?
Yeah.
Glenn Doig?
Present.
Okay, let the record reflect that we have five members to continue business and to start business. This time here, I'd like to uh look at the, have the minute, approval of the minutes of September 2nd, 2020 by the board. Is there anybody?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from the September meeting.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second it.
Second it? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, uh, this time here, we got ratification of Ron Carr, he's the owner. Christopher Williams, the applicant of Sessas Plot 323, Lot 105, 1216 Town Farm Road, Zoned R3. That's a ratification with approval with stipulations. Uh, do I have a motion to ratify?
Make a motion that we ratify.
Okay, do I second on that?
No, seconded.
Who's second that? Eddie?
Yes.
Okay, Eddie Ionati, second that. All those with approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Application's ratified. Okay, the next one is Gail Mahoney. That's, uh, owner's the same, location, Sessas Plot.
Mister Chair?
Yep.
Um, actually, I spoke to the solicitor at length about this. We are actually just, it's something that we have to do into our office with regard to that because it was just an extension, no decision. So we could actually skip on to Sylvia.
Okay. Alright, so, the next one is... Okay, Joseph F. Sylvia, Jr. Sessas Plot Map, I was the owner and applicant. Location, Sessas Plot Map, 52 Lot 7, 1428 Main Street, Zoned R20. That was approved. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved, Mister Chairman.
Seconded.
Motion seconded by?
Keith.
Keith. All those, all those approve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Alright, the next application is Fred Corin. Uh, owner's the same, location, Sessas Plot Map, 22 Lot 34, 6 Colonial Drive, Zoned R20. That application was also approved. Do I have a motion on that? Ratify.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, I got made and seconded by, uh, Russ. All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, nays? Ayes have it. Okay, the next one is Glenn Martin and Joy Martin. Uh, that's the owner and applicant. Location is Sessas Plot Map, 64 Lot 94, 110 Reed Avenue, Zoned R20. That application was approved. Do I have a ratification to approve that?
So moved.
Seconded the motion.
Who made the motion? Who moved the motion?
I did, Keith.
Keith, okay, and uh?
Russ seconded.
Okay, Russ seconded. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes approved. Okay. Next one is Michael Lenardom. Am I correct on that? And that's the applicant?
He Lenardo.
Ben Lando, I'm sorry. Sessas Plot Map, 321 Lot 42.1, 275 Waterman Hill, Zoned R5. That application was approved with stipulations. Do I have a motion to ratify?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to ratify. I have, do I have a second on that?
Seconded it.
Okay, Russ is seconded. Okay, all those say aye to approve with stipulations?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? Okay, that application is approved and ratified with stipulations. Okay, the next one is John and Susan Inos. Uh, Lot, Sessas Plot Map, 39, Lot 151, 138 Columbia Avenue, Zoned R20. That was also approved with stipulations of the seven feet for the side lot line. Do I have a motion to ratify that?
So moved.
Okay, Russ is?
Seconded.
Seconded by Keith. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nays? Alright, so everybody voted for, to approve, ratification of the contract. Okay, next one I have, uh, Tina S. Creamer. That's the living trust, applicant's the same. Location, Sessas Plot Map, 64 Lot 21115, no, 215, 145 McCott Boulevard, Zoned R20. Uh, that was approved as presented. Do I have a motion to ratify?
Moved.
Uh, Lenny, you made that?
Keith.
Keith.
I'm sorry, Keith, okay?
Seconded.
Okay, Ed made a second. All of those who approve as presented, uh, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? No nays. Application's ratified. Okay, next one is Christine B. Amra. This is Sessas Plot Map, 74 Lot 005, 3333 Reed Schoolhouse Road. That application was approved, so do I have a vote on ratification of the motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Made and seconded, ratification. All those, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? No nays. Application's approved. Next, uh, we have, uh, regarding the...
Rodalowitz.
Rodalowitz. Uh, that's the permit that we had for, uh?
That was the appeal.
That's an appeal, correct. Uh, and that was, uh, we voted to uphold and fine of $200 and uphold the finding of the zoning officer. All those, uh, wish to ratify that? Make a, I need a motion on that?
Motion to ratify.
Okay. I was saying, seconded by Lenny?
Keith.
Keith. Okay, all those vote to uphold the finding of the zoning officer and the violations of $200 by voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays on that? There's no nays. Okay, so it's all ayes and that's what it is. Alright, is there anything else we gotta bring up from old business, Russ?
I think we're good. Um...
That should have covered everything. No, that's all.
No.
Um, actually, that's all for old business. I have a couple of announcements to make for the new business, so if you wanna move on to that.
Uh, wait a minute, no, old business, that was, that was the ratification?
I mean, the ratification. He said old business, I got...
Yeah, old business, we're not gonna be hearing Rodriguez, correct?
I have not heard anything from them.
Right, last I knew, they were trying to get their septic approved. They were hoping to get it approved by October. But, um, I, I, I don't know, so, um...
Why don't we just continue that then?
Right, and Carrie, are you gonna explain that the other one was withdrawn without prejudice?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want me to? Okay, so, we're gonna, let's continue Rodriguez to a date certain, which is November 4th, 2000, no, 2020, sorry.
Mister Chairman, I, uh, make a motion that we continue a talk to, to the November meeting.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Seconded.
I second that motion.
Okay, Russ made the motion, Keith seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Nays? Okay, that is continued to next month.
Okay, the other thing is, uh, Kirkland withdrew their application. There was a notice put in your packet. They withdrew it without prejudice as they chose to move the shed. Um, I'm still working on them. I will measure the footings as soon as they're in the ground. Okay, that's it for old business. For new business, I just wanna announce in case anybody's here. The Wyandell application on 17 Justa Avenue needs to be continuing, continued due to a, an amendment in their application. So we're gonna continue that to November 4th.
Okay, you sent us out that application, right?
I did not.
No, you didn't. I'm saying going to, yeah.
I will, yep. And then Kenneth Allen on 518 Naughty Oak Road, uh, they requested a continuance due to an unforeseen emergency. So that matter will also be kicked over to November 4th, 2020.
Okay.
Need a motion on that, Mister Chairman, or not?
Uh, I guess we can make, have a motion on it, yes. I'd like to add another one to it, I believe, unless he's in the audience, is, uh, 106 Johnson Boulevard, Michael Carl Lin?
Carlini.
I spoke to him at 5 o'clock tonight. I went over there to see that. And he did not, he just received the notice that he, at 12 o'clock, that he'd have to go online. He, we thought he was going to a meeting tonight, unless he's in the audience. And his wife is the, the computer expert in the family, and she's visiting her mother. She did not...
Mister Chair, I've made it clear to every applicant that has come before us since April, that it's a Zoom-only meeting.
Alright, uh, how do you make that clear to them?
I, I, I explain it to everybody and also explain that there will be an email sent out a day or two before the hearing.
Did he, okay, apparently he says he didn't get, I don't know, he says he didn't get it, so I don't know. I say point blankly, just to make sure we're clear that we should continue this to next month, unless he's in the audience.
Well, I mean, we can be clear, and I will reach out to him again, but he doesn't follow instruction very well.
Again, that's up to the members of the zoning board. Uh, any, uh, any, uh, discussion on this?
I don't see a problem with it myself.
Okay, anybody else?
I make a motion, we move it to, to the, to the November meeting.
I second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All those approved, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Nays?
Is that for all of them, or just the one?
Just that one.
So, Carlini?
Yeah, Carlini.
Okay.
Alright, well, that's gonna be continued to next month.
And then, under the Board of Appeals, the application for McNeil and St. Germain is also gonna be continued to November 4th, 2020.
Alright, uh... Okay, alright, uh...
Do we need a motion, do we need the motion for that, or?
I just to make one.
Okay, I make a motion, we, we, uh, postpone them, McNeil and St. Germain till November 4th meeting?
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Okay, all those in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? No nays, that'll be continued to November.
Meeting. Do we need to do the other two, Mister Chairman?
Um, I think we already did.
Not yet.
Yeah. Didn't we? Okay, uh... So now we got, uh, okay, also wanna make an announcement. Due to the late nature of the note, of the application sent to the board members, any board member that has not been able to see these and doesn't feel comfortable on voting on these tonight, I back that up 100%. Because I, some of these, I'm not gonna know what to ask for questions, cuz I haven't seen them. So, I will not vote on anything I have not seen.
Yeah, oh yeah, I got the, I got it late last night and I worked late. I didn't look at any of this till just before the meeting.
Alright, so if you feel like, you know...
Yeah, we'll have to see as how it goes, Mister Chairman.
Okay, okay, alright, at this time here, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the secretary, so she can read the first application into the record.
The applicant, the next application, the owner is a town of Coventry. The applicant is Columbus Energies, Inc. Location is AP 59 Lot 13, 1675 Flat River Road. Zone is Industrial 1. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to install a liquid propane dispensing station in the bus yard in the rear northeastern parking lot of the premises.
Excuse me, Mister Chairman, do we have a solicitor? Okay, yes, we need a solicitor, definitely for this one. Especially since this...
Mister Wazika, can you hear us, sir?
I can hear you.
We need a solicitor for this application.
Jane, if you aren't in attendees, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing you. Hang on one second, please. Alright, Jane, unmute your audio, please. Jane, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can. Uh, gentlemen, ladies, there is a solicitor on board.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Jane.
Hi.
Okay, uh, we are doing the application of Columbus Energy. This town of Coventry, address is 1675 Flat River Road. This is, uh, application to use, seek a permit to install a 3,700 gallon liquid propane dispensary station in the rear parking lot operated by Ocean State Transit LLC. Okay, do we have a representative of the Columbus Energy?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Okay, give you full name and address?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eric Bransky. I'm an attorney with offices at 1543 Fall River Avenue at Seconk with the law firm of Bransky Levinson LLC. And, uh, I also have my client, Jay Macedonio, is principal owner of Columbus Energy, uh, right below me on the screen.
Okay, so you're representing Columbus Energy and the town of Coventry?
I am representing Columbus Energy.
Okay, who do I have here to represent the owner, town of Coventry?
There is nobody here this evening, sir, to represent the owner.
Don't I need that, Jane, don't I need that permission?
Uh, I think that if they sign the application, that should be sufficient.
The application? The application was signed by the town manager, sir.
Okay, so then you can go forward.
Alright, thanks.
You do not need to have the owner present.
Okay, uh, the attorney, I'm gonna swear you in, cuz you're, you're gonna have to give testimony. Raising your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, please explain to me what you'd like to do.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Mister Chairman, and I'm in a public place, so I'll do the best I can with background noise here. I lost power at my office. And hope. But, uh, as, as stated by the board, this site is, uh, located across from the town hall. And basically what the site is, is it's been housing the school buses for the, uh, town of Coventry school system. And the school buses run on, um, propane as opposed to diesel fuel. So my client, Columbus Energies, has a contract with the town of Coventry and the school department to supply the propane to the school buses. Well, um, my client delivers propane from Swansea, Massachusetts. And what this application will effectively do is allow the construction of a 3,700, um, gallon propane tank on-site. So it would avoid much of the transportation costs and allow the buses to fuel on-site. I would note that this application, uh, prior to being before your board, went to the, uh, town council, received a zone change, changed the zoning district to the I-1 zoning district where it is designated. The council was fully supportive of it. And, uh, prior to coming to the board this evening, of course, it went to the planning board for a positive or negative recommendation. The planning board, in fact, issued a positive recommendation. We submitted a memorandum, uh, that explained everything in detail, cited provisions of the conference plan, the zoning code, um, and explained how it satisfied the conditions of approval, uh, for issuance of the special use permit. The zoning code, uh, requires a special, uh, use permit be issued for the tank itself. So that's kind of the 5,000 to 10,000-foot view of the project, and we're seeking, uh, approval of this board to install the tank on-site. It'll save money, save, uh, uh, energy. And Mister Macedonio, who is now to my, I guess, lower left-hand side, can explain, uh, the ins and outs of, uh, the propane tank, the installation and how it works itself. However, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, as long as we have this individual to explain how it's gonna be set up?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, Jay Macedonio?
Mister Chairman, I just wanted to state one thing, sir. Uh, Mister Bransky made a comment, I believe he, he implied it was a unanimous approval by the town council. My recollection was, I don't believe it was a 5-0 vote.
No, I, I think I, I said the council was fully supportive. I don't think I, I meant to imply it was unanimous. That is correct. I think it was, uh, maybe 4-1.
It was 4-1.
I think you're right. I think you're right, Mister Crossman.
I, I just, I, I just wanted to set the record straight.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
Okay, now, uh... Mister Bransky?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the individual is gonna give the testimony on how it's gonna be installed?
Yes, Mister Macedonio.
Macedonio, okay. I'm gonna have to have you on, please, you waiting in? Give you a full name and address?
I, John Macedonio, Jr., 20 Anawan Street, Somerset, Massachusetts.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay. Explain to me how you're gonna do this?
Uh, it's a, it's a 12 by 24 cement pad, about eight inches thick. And, uh, the tank arrives on a, on a steel platform in itself, and it, there it is. Uh, you know, it's all steel. It comes pre-fabricated. There's really not much of a, of a process of assembly. We did run an electrical line to it, just a simple 110 volt, uh, underground conduit to feed the power to that dispenser, which is the silver box you see. And just like you would pull up to the gas pump on your car or, uh, or any electric vehicle, you just, you hook up the propane, uh, dispenser with a spin. The handle, and it pumps propane. It stops by itself. You really, that's it. You unscrew it, you put it back on. It doesn't make much noise. There's not any releases of gas or anything, uh, really dangerous that happens. It's very common. We have five of them across Rhode Island, uh, servicing other communities from Exeter to South Kingston. East Providence has a large fleet. South Kingston Street's pretty large, and East Grant has a, has a fleet about of Coventry's, and they all have, uh, this setup that you see there.
Okay, you're gonna have fire suppression right at the site? You have what, a chemical system?
So there's, uh, there's melt-away, uh, the bottom of the tank, there's melt-away, um, shut-off valves. So if there ever was a fire, the lead melts, shuts the valves off. No propane can escape through the piping. Uh, if you look on the left-hand side, there's a little red fire extinguisher right there. It's a 20-pound ABC fire extinguisher, uh, for onsite. Uh, emergency shut-offs for electricals on that, on that post right next to that fire extinguisher also, so the electric, uh, electrical gets killed with one push of a button.
You do not have any tanks in there to extinguish a fire right at the tank? It's just that?
No, and part, part of the, it is at the tank there, and then there'll be one at the entrance to the building, which would be, you know, 50 feet from, you know, 60 feet from that, uh, from that pad. The, uh, in the event of a fire, we're gonna, we're gonna kinda recommend that if they can't shut the gas supply off, they do not try to extinguish that fire. That, that tank that you see there would be absolutely fine on fire. You could put a fire underneath it, boil it off. The only spot that would come, gas would release from is that long spigot off the top. You can just see, it looks like a mast. Um, and that would be a controlled burn. That tank will never blow up, uh, as long as that, the gas is blowing off there. There's a fire control for the fire department to come and make sure that they shut the gas off before you try to extinguish a propane fire.
So you do not have any automatic suppression system?
No automatic suppression for the fire, only for the gas flow, and that melts away at the bottom of the tank, kills all the, all the gas from getting outside the gas piping, keeps it inside that tank, and if needs to, it goes out the top of that, uh, that.
You don't have nothing at the pump station, right where they're gonna be pumping?
Yes, NFPA calls for that 20-pound ABC fire extinguisher in case there is a fire. That would take care of that.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, if I may, Mister Macedonio, maybe you could explain to the board, uh, what the NFPA is and, and why this is NFPA compliant?
Uh, so NFPA is a National Fuel, uh, Protection Agency, and that's the, the heads of all the fire departments across America. They write a book, they get together once a year, and they upgrade the book, uh, for what protocol is on, on such things like pump stations and just home applications like, uh, for generators or for heat sources. And they set this distances, the codes, um, and, uh, and really what you need for emergencies, and we've adhered to that. That's our bible.
Okay, how is, who's gonna fuel up the buses?
So, the Ocean State will have two employees, as they do at their other sites, uh, trained and qualified by us to pump into their buses. And they'll have like the 32 buses, I think, in town that run on propane. They'll each be in charge of either 16 or, you know, depending on if they're doing a rotation of a shift. And they might fill eight in the course of a shift, and then eight at the end of the day, making 16 pumped for the day. Yeah, they, they have a pretty good operation going, and, uh, if there's a new employee that comes onboard, we take over, we train them, we sign, certify, and, uh, keep records of that, too.
Alright, so that person, or two persons that are authorized, no bus drivers will be authorized to fuel the buses?
No, no, nor do they, they're, I don't wanna say they, uh, they do their, they do their job and that's it, you know, at, at the bus company. You drive the bus, you don't fuel the bus. And that's whether it's a propane bus or diesel buses with Ocean State Transit, they don't have everybody just filling and, and, and doing their own stuff. They have designated fuels, whether it's a combustible, like propane, or a, or a liquid, then the liquid, like, that's, that's the way they operate.
Okay, I am still gonna be telling you, I'm not pleased without having the automatic suppression system. As Russ Lockleid, a member of the board, past chief of the local fire department, knows, and that's right where I live, suburban propane had a very serious fire in the last five years. Right at...
And like, like I said, there's, the last thing you wanna do is put a fire out without being able to stop that gas. So fire suppression systems would actually do that, you know, if, if it did its job, like, to suppress a fire. And then you don't know if you have that gas shut off, in which case that, that leads to gas escaping and looking for a place to, to, to cause a problem. So that's not what you want.
Right, but what I'm saying is you don't have one. You don't have any fire suppression, other than that fire extinguisher.
That fire extinguisher, and then the fuel shut off, the, uh, the temperature, um, can, will shut off at the bottom of the tank. That's what NFPA wants. Like I said, if you suppress the fire without being able to shut, if you suppress that fire and didn't shut the gas flow off, it's, it's a bigger problem than what you had, making fire happen. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, the expertise on this, I'm gonna turn over to Russ Lockleid. Russ, would you please?
The, uh, I'm concerned that we don't have any report from the local fire marshal, uh, in his, uh, whether he's in favor of this or not. The, the gentleman is correct. Um, propane is heavier than air. If we put, if we were to put the fire out and it didn't secure the gas, the gas will leak along the ground and find another source of ignition, and then instead of having a fire, you have a ma, you have, could have a massive explosion. I, I think you're in the right, you're in the right ballpark, Mister Crow. However, um, I've checked with the other, uh, um, I was able to check out, yeah, um, depot down in East Providence, and it's set up the same way. He's, he's correct. You really can't have like sprinklers or a dry chem situation over the top of it. They just, it, it's, it's just too dangerous to do that. In the event of a fire, they basically want you to kill a, kill the, the valve and run away. Um, that's, that's basically what it works. I mean, if you can put it out with the dry powder extinguisher, that's great. But anybody that's been in the gas, in the wing... But anybody that's been in the gas, the Winkle and Gas Association, any of these big company or big organizations, putting out the fire is not great until you can secure the gas first. So I, I'm, I was more concerned about who was gonna fill the, fill the buses. That's been, that's been answered and I'm, I'm okay with that. But I, I'd still like to see something from the local fire marshal with his okay as to how they're gonna set it up.
I agree. All right, any other board members have questions?
Have, have, has Columbus reached out to the local fire department yet? I haven't.
I have, I've left messages, but to no avail, no call back on that. And they really haven't pushed it because I didn't have a permit in hand for this. But I do like to make sure that they're on board with it and that.
I can, I can actually make some of that work. I'll, I'll be in contact with the chief tomorrow. So I can get, get the wheels moving towards your, toward your way anyways.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'm comfortable with this, Mr. Chairman. Now that, now that it's been explained, there's only gonna be a couple of people that are filling the buses. I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. I was more worried about, you know, the buses, the bus drivers just coming in and, you know, you know how we get complacent as what we're doing and just like at a gas pump, a regular gasoline pump, static electricity's a problem. We could still, still have the same problem with, with this. But if you localize it and people are, you know, are trained and they know what they're doing, I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable with that. Because this is right around the corner from my house too, so.
Right. My biggest concern was also at the old Wood Street by me purchasing a house near the location. I realized that that, I was notified that that was a hazardous waste site where the buses were parked the last time. So I just don't feel it's smart for the town to create another one. I don't know how it became a hazardous waste site. And I don't know if buses had anything to do with it or if it's just from something else on the property.
I, I think propane, and I'm not a scientist, Mr. Macedonia can tell you more. But I think propane is the alternative clean energy to diesel fuel. This is clean energy. It's as clean as you get. Mr. Macedonia?
I just want to make sure we're not creating another problem.
Sure.
They're not gonna be doing any maintenance on the, no, they're not gonna be changing the oil or, or, you know, where, where, I, I think possibly with the older buses, and I'm going back to when I was fire chief, you know, from time to time, they were, they were doing major transmission work and engine jobs over there. And that's possibly, that's where some of the stuff may have got on the ground. Because it was really no shop for them to work on. A lot of that stuff was been done outside. My understanding is, is that if these buses need maintenance, they'll be taken to a facility and done off-site. Again, I'm comfortable with that.
Is that the way we're gonna maintain these buses?
They, they have, they have garages for their, for their workers, their, their mechanics. They, they don't, that, that site's not very suitable for any.
No, it's wide open.
Yeah.
You're not gonna do any maintenance at that location?
Well, Mr. Crowe, if I may, the, the storage of the buses there isn't allowed use. That's why they changed the zone. We're here for the propane tank and that's it.
Right, but the loud use of the buses never came in front of us.
It doesn't have to because it's, it's allowed by right under the zoning ordinance.
Wasn't allowed when it was moved there.
Right, but the council changed the zone.
Right, so, yeah, well, yeah. They can change the zone anywhere, I guess.
So I don't want to speak to what the buses do or don't do there. My client is the propane supply company and that's why I, I'm sure what they're saying is accurate. I just, I don't have the authority to speak on their behalf.
Okay. I'd prefer to wait and get an approval from the fire chief on this endeavor. Because this could be a very, something's wrong, this could be a very, and I'm not gonna sign off of, you know, this is right in a residential area. I know this is owned overnight industrial, but this is in a highly residential area. So I don't, and I'm gonna leave it open to the rest of the board members.
Would, would you be inclined or the board be inclined to accept the application and put a condition of approval that we receive and deliver the local chief's blessing, so to speak, before the ratification?
No, I'd like to on the record. I want to see it before I vote on it.
I understand.
I mean, the rest of the members may feel different. They may approve it as is. How do you feel? I'm gonna go to, Keith, how do you feel on this?
Bob, I agree with you. I, I would like to see some fire department input. As far as the location, at 60 feet from, from that building, and to put a 3,700 gallon propane tank close to a building without a fire department approval, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. And I, and I.
I agree, we should wait to.
Okay, Russ?
I've already speak, I've already spoken to that. Like I said, I'd like, I just want to see what the marshal has to say about this. He should have the final say.
Okay, Lanny?
I agree with you. I think we should wait to see what the fire department says. See what their contingency is in case something happens.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay, at this time here, we'd like to see if there's anybody who's like to speak in favor of this application or have any questions on the application.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jane Grisenda, the solicitor.
Yes.
I, I would like to see the criteria set forth in Article 4 for a special use permit, permit addressed as part of this testimony. I think we've been focusing on, you know, the compatibility and the safety. But we also have to think about screening and buffering and all the other criteria. Some that really don't apply, but we need to have something on the record addressing.
I agree.
Okay.
That'd be up to the attorney.
Right.
Sure, I could, I could solicit the testimony if you, if that pleases the board, Mr. Mass. Oh, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Macedonia, one of the conditions or factors of approval is that ingress and egress to the lot into the existing or proposed structures thereon, with particular reference to automobile, pedestrian, safety and convenience, traffic flow and control, and access in case of fire emergency or catastrophe is, is properly addressed. So with regard to ingress, egress, is this proposal going to cause any sort of change to the existing ingress and egress to the site?
I don't believe so. On our end, any tank under the capacity of 4,000 gallons shouldn't even need any special permission from, you know, said the fire marshal. It doesn't need to go for any state approval. It's, it should be done on the town's level. And if we have the chief here for that, and you want more, that's, I can definitely get in touch with the, the fire marshals and, and get their, their input too. It's an extra phone call, an extra step that isn't called for by NFPA in this application. But if the board would like it, by all means, I believe there's.
And provided we got that chief sign off or blessing.
He didn't answer your question.
I'm sorry?
Forms of egress, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm definitely gonna defer the forms of egress to the, to the, to the fire marshal when he's there because he's the professional on that end too. I, I, what I say at this point is just, is moot compared to what he's gonna say when, when he's there. So, yeah, we'll definitely address that with him. And if he doesn't give the blessing on the egress in two forms in and out, and then it doesn't, it's not a good place. We're flexible on both the location through the lot, where it goes, so that everybody is content. And, you know, on the up and up.
Okay, so we don't have an answer to that?
On the forms of egress? Oh, yes. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would never put this before the council now if it wasn't compliant with any form of, of fire, fire compliance, egress being the first and foremost.
Let me, let me, maybe I could reframe the question, Mr. Crowe. Mr. Macedonia, in terms of ingress and egress of automobiles to and from the site, is this gonna have any impact whatsoever?
No, no, we, we'll be tucked, we'll be tucked away, away from any, any travel in and out.
In terms of pedestrian safety, other than the fire issue, which we obviously have to address, just access-wise, any impact whatsoever?
No fence then, no pedestrians.
Do you have correct egress and ingress exit for the buses to this site? With no problem?
I don't think that's what's before the board, Mr. Chairman. Again, we're here for the propane tank, but.
That's what I'm saying. But it's propane, you should do, you gotta have correct egress and exit from that propane tank.
Of course, yep, yep. And it's, it's all open back there. I don't know if you're familiar with the back parking lot there, but there's not, there's no like boundary fence even around there. And it's, the only fence that's gonna be around it will be around the propane tank of the newest transportation site.
Okay, where on site is the tank going?
You're familiar with the back lot? There's a generator in the back that runs maybe the police or the, the radio stuff of the town. There's a suburban propane tank, the rear, rear of the facility. I would put the tank, ideally, where I would like to put it is where the gap in those buses are there, that first rope. Yep, where Mr. Bransky's pointing with that.
It's actually not me, but whoever's pointing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ideally, yep, all setbacks should be, you know, should be reached from there.
You're gonna be like 20, 30 feet from the building?
I'd like it to be 50 feet from where that pad starts, like 45 feet with a pad right around there. And then the tank wouldn't go closer than 50 feet and.
Okay, I'm gonna need a drawing of that and how many?
You received a site plan from a company called Site Tech out of Seacoal. And I believe that plan stated that that proposed facility was to be 61 feet off the rear of the building.
That'd be great.
I think that's accurate.
That should be in your packet, sir.
Okay, I'm taking a look and I'm seeing it. Minimum setbacks, the front is 50, side core is 50, side's 30, rear is 50. Okay, but I would like to see right where it's gonna go. You know what I'm saying? I don't have a, unless I'm missing something, I don't.
I think it's on the site plan.
Gary, were they given the site plans?
Yes.
I got one, two. I'm still looking.
Yes, they were.
I have mine.
It was two 11s by 17 sheets. One was an overall plan and then the second plan was like a blow up of the backyard bus facility.
I mean, Mr., I'll get the plans out myself. I just.
Yeah, it's showing 61 feet. I believe, 61.
Right, that's what I had stated earlier, 61 feet off the building.
Yes. Are we good to move to the next item or do we want to?
No, go ahead, continue.
Okay, so another one of the conditions of approval or factors to consider during approval, Mr. Macedonia, is whether off-street parking and loading areas are going to be affected by the proposal. So in terms of the propane tank on off-street, off-site, check that, off-street parking and loading. Is there any effect that it will have on the existing site?
No.
And how about with regard to noise, glare, odor? Any issues?
No.
And economically, is this, is this a benefit to the town?
It is.
Why?
Significantly, the man hours to have a bobtailers propane delivery truck, to have that truck go, go wheel to wheel. He's there servicing it with a big truck idling for two hours to fill these, these, as opposed to that, a little electric dispenser running for that two-hour span with two employees by Ocean State. I don't know, it's thousands of dollars a month if you add it up in time. Coventry saves that and it just keeps that, that big propane truck idling in that lot for two hours with that hose going back and forth. Just very dangerous, a lot of noise, that truck running, you know, running at 1,100 RPMs for, you know, close to two hours. It's a lot of heat, a lot of noise, getting pulled through there as opposed to them on their way in. And the fuel fulfilling those up for the course of the day.
Okay, and is there savings to the town in terms of transportation costs?
I don't think the town's gonna use what they use for fuel, just, just on the, on the delivery end, the labor cost is gonna go down.
Okay, maybe probably saying the same thing here. So labor in terms of getting the propane there is the additional cost that the town is saving.
Yes, going wheel to wheel with that big truck there is, is expensive.
And the screening and the buffering is as depicted in the pictures that we saw a little bit earlier?
Yes, yeah, that all looked, that looked identical. It, it won't have that awning on it like that, that picture. That was an added on a little, yeah, that awning above there. So if it rains, they will get rain on. That isn't part of the, East Providence added that on to their feature, but you won't have that.
They'll have those ballasts there?
All the ballasts around there, yes. It'll be color-coded like that too, yeah.
Okay. And is there any signage associated with this other than what we're seeing on the tank there?
No, we're looking at the look list like that with the placards and emergency phone, phone, phone numbers on there and our company logo in case of emergency.
Is there any lighting associated with this?
We'd like to add some additional lighting on the facility. Ocean State will be providing that just to, just to upgrade lighting while the electrical trench is going in and.
Will those lighting, will the lighting in terms of this particular location for the tank impact any of the neighboring properties?
I don't believe so. We have the, we have some lights off of the Washington Oak School now to flood that area. And then when the light posts go up, we can, those will need their own permits too. So electrician can follow through with that end.
In terms of number seven, the required yards, I'm gonna go ahead and say that that's setback requirements. And, and that was kind of addressed on the site plan, Mr. Chairman. General compatibility with lots in the same or abutting zoning districts. Again, once again, the town council changed the zone. And I know that the abutting property, or at least part of the abutting properties, is also industrial, is it not?
No.
The abutting parcels are all zoned R2 residential. The, the industrial property is across the street.
I see.
Town hall facilities across the street are industrial, as well as I believe the parcel to the right, which is where the pallets are being constructed, as well as the RAS, as far down as that. To the left of the existing town hall facilities are zoned industrial one also.
Thank you. I'd also add though, with the planning board's recommendation, and they consider consistency with the comprehensive plan and, and general characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood, that in and of itself, I think serves as additional evidence in that respect. And with regard to number 10, same thing, general compatibility with the comprehensive plan. The planning board made that recommendation. And in terms of the industrial performance standards, I think we addressed that in our memorandum of law where they don't really apply to this particular use. I think there, those standards are exempted because of what it is.
But it's known industrial, so you've got to comply to it.
Well, yes, but there are standards in terms of what your zoning ordinance requires for the industrial performance standards. And, and those specific standards don't actually apply to this proposal. So in other words, we comply.
Going back to the lighting and signs, the lighting is gonna have to, you're not gonna put the lighting 61 feet away from the, while they're fueling up. You're gonna have to put the lighting somehow over where the pumps are. 61 feet away is not sufficient.
Mr. Macedonia, any idea on the lighting?
Well, there's, there's, there's lighting going in. There's, it's all part of the Ocean State's proposed plan. But yeah, definitely want, definitely want light on that situation.
So there's gonna be light, some sort of lighting by, I think. So there's gonna be light, some sort of lighting by, I think what Mr. Crowe is saying, rightfully so, is by the. Uh, actual tank itself, as opposed to like a large floodlight on the building?
Yeah, as I look, as I look at it, um, I haven't talked to the representatives from Ocean State on the first light post that I think would go on the, on the corner of where the. You see the, with the rough gravel meets, that I, there might even be a, an existing light there and just upgrade that. I know he wanted to put another floodlight on the other side of the entrance, just so that the uh, the ways in and out were lit on that side and uh.
Yes, and um, as to the last.
Now, it's compatibility with the area, everything around this is zone residential.
I'm looking at a bait shop on the right-hand side, or some, something like that, I don't know if that's a residential, um.
Residential all the way around, all except for across the street.
I, I would say that with the planning board's recommendation on, on that particular issue, that's usually. What is considered in the courts is, is the guidance on compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and comprehensive plan. And the planning board has issued a positive recommendation, I know it's just a recommendation, of course, but.
Right, I don't disagree with the recommendation, but I'm just saying, this proposal is not. Unless you demonstrate how this could be compatible with the R zone, R two zoning.
It's not our, it's not R two, it's I one.
I one for this, but it's that I one with a fuel tank compatible to the R two next to it.
With a water capacity of under four thousand gallons, I would assume so, yes, doesn't need special approval from, you know, like I said, the uh, on the state level.
Mr. Macedonio, let, let me, if I may, Mr. Crowe, maybe I could ask this question, how big are the tanks that residential houses usually take?
Uh, five hundred to one thousand gallon houses, there are one thousand gallon tanks per house.
Do you service houses with propane, residential houses?
Thousand, thousands of customers.
Any in Rhode Island?
Yes.
So, there are residential homes that are serviced by similar tanks, just a little bit smaller, because of what they're doing as compared to this.
Yeah, and this is a dispensing station, so uh, yeah, it's being, not used to the general public, it's a private dispensing station for uh, Ocean State and uh.
Um, is there anything about this particular proposal, the propane tank? In your opinion, based on your years in the propane business, that would. Be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals and welfare of the folks in Coventry?
No, I wouldn't be doing this if it was a danger to anybody, including myself.
And uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that hopefully uh. Addresses all of the factors, save the issue of, of the local fire marshal, which we obviously have to address.
Okay, also on this now, I'm gonna refer to Russ. Would there have to be a pull station or, or alarm system right here that will go directly to the fire department?
Again, um, we'd have to check with the local fire marshal on that, I, I, I really don't know if there's anything in, in the fire codes in regards to that. I know that most of the um, refilling stations around town, uh, BJ's and, and, and others. Um, they have a twenty-pound fire extinguisher in the um, close proximity to where they actually fill the tanks. These are the small, you know, gas, gas tanks for, for propane grill, grill, uh, grills and whatnot. Um, I don't believe we have a propane station here in town, so this would be um, something new. I'm not aware of it be, having to be tied directly into the fire department, but uh, again. Um, I would refer to the local fire marshal for his opinion on that, based on what the, the state fire code say. Like I said, if we had a report from him, this would have, we could have cleared this all up, but unfortunately, they haven't been able to get a hold of fire marshal.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I got applicant, go right ahead, the attorney.
Sure, so um, I'm just looking through the, the performance standards, this is in section two fifty-five of the code. Uh, which is I, what I was referring to a little earlier, and give me just a quick moment. Yeah, so under section two fifty-five, seven, one, eight, zero. This is performance standards under the industrial. Um, performance standards of the code for fire and explosive hazards, it says the use, storage and manufacture. Of flammable or explosive materials shall receive approval when you're on state fire marshal prior to receiving a building permit. Adequate safety firefighting and fire suppression devices shall be provided according to industry. Uh, check that standard industry practices. Um, I, I think what Mr. Macedonio was saying is, look, we comply with NFPA, which is why we don't need one of those fire suppression systems. But Mr. Chairman, I have to agree with you that to demonstrate to the board that we satisfy the industrial performance standards. We need the local chief to, to opine on that issue, because it basically just defers to him. Um, even though we, we know we're gonna comply, so with that in mind. I, I'd happily take further questions at this point, but I think that if we got a continuance to a date certain and, and with Mr. I'm just gonna call Mr. Chief, his gracious offer to help us contact the local uh, chief and, and set that in motion. Um, I, I think we'd be in good shape for, for next month or next meeting.
Alright, I, I agree, let me uh, um, review with the board, um.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
If I may.
Yep.
This, this, the, 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 the zoning change was, did appear in front of the council. And they approved in with the recommendation, and they approved for the I one. The actual installation of this tank has never been in front of the council. Uh, I, I, Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, is there any problem with at, having it in front of the council? Before final approval on this, to make sure that they are also in agreement with doing this?
Ed, I agree with you.
Jane, is there an issue with that, if we do it that way?
No, that, that's fine, to make sure the council understands that this is part of the new I one zone. Or to make sure that they're okay with locating a propane tank on their property, I would think so.
With all due respect, I, I don't understand, this is a special use permit, which is issued by the zoning board, okay? I don't understand what role the town council would play in this situation, I mean. I, I, I don't understand.
Only, only because they are the owner of the building, Russ. And just to make sure, I don't believe there would be a problem, but I, I just think it might be appropriate that they do a final okay as well. With prior to the next meeting where you need the fire inspector anyways.
Okay.
I agree. Okay, uh, is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this application in the audience?
If anyone wants to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll bring you into the meeting. Going once, going twice, gone, Mr. Chairman, no one is raising their hand.
Okay, uh, at this time here, uh, I, I believe the board would like to. Unless I'm wrong definitely, uh, continue this to next month until we get the reports. Uh. Because this is a very, this could be a very hazardous situation. And I do want the council online with this too. I don't believe I have the expertise to approve such. Such item. Alright, Keith, how do you feel? I'm gonna do a, a roll call vote on this, alright.
I, 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 I agree with the continuance to uh, the date certain, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, make it legal, I'm gonna have a motion made to continue this, where I'll do a roll call vote, do I have a motion on the floor? Keith, you gonna make it?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I need a second on that.
Second.
Second by Ed, okay, I'm gonna start off with uh, Russ, on a roll call vote, how do you vote on this to continue?
Uh, approves to continue to next month, uh, pending the fire marshal's report.
Okay, Keith?
I approve the continuance.
Ed?
I approve the continuance.
Lenny?
I approve the continuance.
Chair also approves the continuance.
Very well.
Thank you everybody for coming tonight.
Do we have a date on that, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Uh, be the first Wednesday in November.
November fourth.
November fourth.
Okay, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, let's continue on to the next application.
The next applicant, the owner is Hromis Realty LLC, the applicant is Juliette Austin. Location is AP sixty-five lot eleven, two-two-six-zero Flat River Road. Zone is VRC, applicant is speaking, is seeking a special use permit to operate a restaurant.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes, I am.
And I'm gonna bring her attorney in now at this time, I'm gonna, if that's okay with the chair?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. McNailas, are you in the meeting?
I believe so, I can see everyone else, I don't see, can you see me?
Uh, we can see you.
Okay.
Alright, I can't see him.
Oh, I can see a, I can see a uh, picture.
I gotta swear amen.
Oh yeah, we need to, there you go. He's right below you, Bob.
I don't have nobody, I just got you, Russell Crossman.
I see the chair, I believe.
I got you now, okay, I'm gonna ask you, you have your full name and address?
Attorney Robert F. McNailas, my law office is located at nine-nine-five Park Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island, oh-two-nine-one-zero.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Of course I do, you're on.
Thank you. Okay, please present the application.
I believe this is an application, um, my brother wasn't here last time before the board. For a special use permit to operate a restaurant on a piece of property, we have a, a member of the application, the LLC person here to answer any questions or concerns. Um, I feel it's a low impact, it's small business, I happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, so you're just, you're taking over the same site that was already a uh, restaurant?
Uh, yes, it was previously the Pond Pub.
Okay, so you're taking over the same locate, the same space and everything else?
Yes, it will be the same space, it will just be under a different name and with a different menu.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, has Miss uh, Austin been sworn in?
No, she hasn't, I'm glad you corrected me.
Okay.
Can I please have you present forward? Mrs. Austin? Alright, do you, do you swear to tell the whole truth? Please give your full name and address for the record.
Uh, Juliette Austin, uh, one oh-seven Griffin Road, Hampton, Connecticut, zero six two four seven.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay, um. This is a special use permit?
Yes.
No, okay, I, now I was gonna ask our attorney, uh.
Yes, that's, it's a special use permit.
Why is this special use permit?
Because you need a. Sorry.
That's what's required in this zone for a restaurant.
Now, isn't this, would this is zoned what, rural?
Village rural commercial, sir.
The rural commercial cannot just operate a restaurant?
No, if you're, if you're looking for a tavern, um, tavern bar or cafe with a liquor license, which is as it's classified. Uh, table six one says you need a special use permit in the village rural commercial zone.
Well, that's because it's in a rural, rural, if it would have been in a commercial zone, it would have been okay.
I believe, I don't have that in front of me, but I think the GB zone would have been okay, yes, sir, but I can double check that.
Now, because it's a change of ownership, we have to redo this, correct?
No, I don't think the ownership would have to do anything to do with it.
Yeah, it is, because it was already a, it was already a pub, so.
That's what I don't understand.
I think every time it changes ownership, you have to redo it, I believe, am I correct?
No, zoning goes with the land, it doesn't go with the ownership.
No, Bob, it's quite possible that the Pond Pub didn't, never had the uh, the permit. Or that it expired upon the sale or the disconnect, discontinuation of use. Um, we often put that in a, as a condition of a special use permit.
Wouldn't that be approved by the council? We're not approving the liquor permit.
No, you're just approving the use in this zone as a, of, as a tavern, uh. Alcohol.
I thought that's already been done, because we, what we do, we only zone property, we don't zone people.
No, um, I'm.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, I'm still working with uh, Joe Ryan, the previous owner of the Pond Pub through this transition. Um, and when I discussed this with him, he said he had never previously gone through this process of zoning.
Then he had a liquor.
We have not ever done this, except for, we did that one, and it was general, general business. And then was told we shouldn't have done it.
If I may, please, Mr. Chairman. Um, I am well aware that the previous owner did not appear before this board for a special use permit, I pulled the file. That was, my predecessor had nothing to do with me, when I was presented with this application, I went to the chart. Um, it says VRC, it says special use permit, an S next to this. I had no other choice, I could not approve this, and S means they needed a special use permit. Only the zoning board can grant a special use permit, that's why they're before you here this evening. Just because the last restaurant didn't do it that way, that had nothing to do with me. Just because the sins of the past was not gonna affect how I operated currently.
Correct, but the. I just wanted to know why, because that's why I asked you for a general business. Is the zoning board is not approving a liquor license, they're just approving for it to go there, and the council would still have to approve the liquor license.
No, Bob, I have the chart in front of me, it is a permitted use in a general business zone. Um, the VRC, which is the Village Rural Commercial and the Village Main Street Commercial are the only two, a, and. The industrial one zone, believe it or not, are the three zones where it's allowed by special use permit.
So it's allowed by special use permit, but just because of this, not, not a general business, right? And we're not approving the liquor license, we're just.
You are not approving the liquor license, you're just approving the, the ability, the special use permit for them to operate a tavern, cafe or club. Bar or lounge with alcoholic beverages at this location.
Am I right?
Yeah, they already had one, that's what I'm saying, but.
Yeah, it's amazing, the town council gave him a liquor license and the guy didn't even have proper zoning.
Right, well, okay, Russ is doing what he.
Yes.
Yep, I understand, but I just wanted to make it clear that we were not issuing a liquor license.
We understand, we understand.
Alright, okay, any other uh, discussion from the board? Okay, at this time here, I'd like to see if there's anybody who would like to speak on this application for, or again.
Bob? Hey Bob, sorry to interrupt you real quick, isn't this, this, isn't this the same location that they had the uh. The septic issue on uh, with the uh, was it the pet grooming that's in the same plaza?
There was no issue with the septic, part of that decision for the pet grooming was that Bob wanted to see. Paperwork regarding how they have continued to have their septic tested, upgraded and so on and so forth. That was actually given to you guys when you got the decision, and while you ratified the decision, so that if there was any questions.
Any questions, okay.
It was all set, so they, their, their septic is up to code.
Okay.
Okay, but it's also up to code for a public restaurant.
Well, the septic.
That was for grooming, that was for.
Right, but there was a restaurant in there at the time of the dog grooming coming before us. And they're basing it on compliance and the use of the building, it's, it's not something that I think is gonna change. I mean, I could be wrong, but we just provided all the documents, I went through and I copied it all, saying that their septic. Had been brought up to compliance and, and whatnot. I mean.
That was the whole buildings thing, so it should be, it should be covered.
Correct, that's exactly. Correct, that's exactly...
And that's the only reason why I brought it up, was because I, I just remembered that from the, the, the grooming place. And I remember it now with all the, uh, you know, the code and all. I just want to make sure that it was all, all addressed, because, you know, it was hopefully that they do, they do well with this pub, and, uh, you know, that they don't have any issues with all of that going on, you know?
To be honest, I was the one that copied all the paperwork, and so as I went through, I was reviewing it while I was copying it. So, from what I can re, from what I can recall, it, there shouldn't be any issues.
Okay, I'm good with that. That answers my...
I'm sorry, Eddie.
That, that septic system that's there, and Ed knows more about this than I do, it's gotta be upgraded to a certain amount for the occupancy of the restaurant in order to eliminate problems. Plus, you've gotta have one that'll take care of the dog grooming. So that's a good-sized septic system. I didn't actually see the approval on what size septic system it is for both operations.
But, but I gave you all the paperwork you had requested for the septic system. It's one septic system that services the whole building.
I, I know, it serves, that's just, that's my question.
And there was a restaurant in there at the time.
I know there was a restaurant in there at the time, but that doesn't mean that, since they, well, they didn't come in front of zoning for the restaurant. So what I'm trying to say is, we, alls we're doing is approving a location, and we're saying that it's all approved. And Keith Claudio even knows this, that, uh, you know, a septic system for a, you know, a restaurant is totally different than anything else.
Agreed, because they need grease traps and all this other stuff. I, I...
Exactly, and I never checked on that and didn't have any knowledge of it.
Does the applicant know whether or not they got grease traps in that restaurant?
Um, so from my understanding, I spoke with the landlord about this when I had originally moved in. I spoke with George to make sure everything was, um, up to code, and he said that because of the rezoning stuff they had to do with the dog groomer next door, uh, the previous restaurant was still here, um, and so they, they made sure everything was up to code at that point.
Okay. I'd still like to have that submitted to us. That's my opinion.
Well, I'm sure the health department was, must have gone in there when she took over ownership and inspected the place, I would assume. But then again...
Right, again, we're assuming.
Exactly, yeah. Because again, like I said, they had the liquor license there, and they actually gave them the liquor license, and it wasn't even in the, it was zoned properly, so...
Right, we're assuming everything.
Do you, does the applicant have a health certificate from the state? Already issued to her?
Not issued to me. So not issued to me under my name. Um, I, as I stated earlier, Joe Ryan and I are working through this transition together. Um, due to the issues with having to come in front of the zoning board, it dragged out our opening a little bit longer than we anticipated, and so in order for me to transition everything into my name and get all of the licenses in my name, I had to wait until everything was done with zoning before I could appear before the town hall, um, and receive the, the transitioned licenses, but all of Joe's licenses are still intact, and that's why he, he's working with me through the transition. So I have the license that was approved in his name.
Okay, so the liquor license is still in his name. I'm, I'm just familiar with this. I was in the business for thirty...
Yes.
So I know how it works. Um, and good luck, by the way. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
Yep.
That will be part of the, the licensing with the liquor license and the transfer. That will be manned, it's mandated as part of the liquor license transfer, the, the health certificate. That'll all be handled on the town, town side, when it appears in front of the council to do that. But she did, I was there, I've checked out. They did have the existing, under the existing license that they're working under right now. They did have the health certificate.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, okay, uh, Keith, how do you feel on this?
Um, I'm okay with it, Mr. Chairman. It wa, it was the same use. Um, the, the use is not changing. It's a pub from one owner to the other. I don't have a problem myself granting the special use permit.
Russ Lockley, how do you feel?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, um, Lenny?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, Ed?
I, I have no problem with it at all, as long as she, uh, gets all the proper paperwork that she needs for her sake, not for the town, for her own sake.
Yeah.
She needs to make sure she gets everything in order, certificate of good standing for her to take over the, the deal. You know, there's a lot involved. I'm sure her lawyer is familiar with the steps to go, but I have no problem with her, uh, with us changing it for her at all.
Okay, um, is there anybody who would like to speak on this application, for, against, or have a, a question on it? Do you see anybody in the audience?
Mr. Chairman, this is the solicitor, Jane Grisenda. I just wanna ask her attorney, Mr. McNailas, just to, regarding the criteria for the special use permit, I think it can be summarized that nothing's going to change from the last restaurant in terms of egress, parking, trash, uh, screening and buffering, exterior lighting, all of that. Is it gonna be basically the same, or are there gonna be changes for any of the special use permit criteria?
I imagine it being substantially the same, for the sound, only the sign and the menu will change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ed, do we have anybody else who'd like to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on this this evening. If you guys agree, I realize you haven't had time to go see it, but it's gonna be the same...
With the location.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on it to vote on this tonight, but I just wanna check and make sure that we have nobody that would like to speak on this application, for or against it.
Mr. Chairman, there is no one. I might add, myself, I've stopped in there a couple of times, and, uh, she's still working under the old license. They haven't transferred yet, and, uh, the wings are excellent, and, uh, they've done a nice job in the building, and nothing has changed on entrance, egress, uh, all the rest of it. It's, uh, it's the same. They've just redone the decor. Uh, very nice job on it. It's a very nice-looking building, and, uh, I think it's gonna be a good addition to the town.
Okay, good. But is there nobody else in the audience that wants to speak?
There, there is none. There's no one else in the audience that wants to speak.
Okay. Uh, Ed, would you like to make a motion on this, that we vote on this tonight, Ed Ionati?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, I have a motion, we'll vote on this tonight. Uh, do I have a second on that?
I second it.
Chairman.
Lenny second it, okay. I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this. Russ Lockley, how do you vote to vote on this tonight?
Affirmative.
Okay, Keith Claudio, how do you vote on this?
I approve.
Okay, Ed?
I approve.
I approve.
Okay, Lenny?
I approve.
Chair also approves to vote on this tonight. Okay, on a vote of approval of this application, uh, do I have a motion on the floor from Ed Ionati?
Yes, I, uh, make a motion to approve as stated.
Okay, now, do I have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Keith Claudio, second. Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on that. Russ, how do you, Lockley, how do you vote?
Approve.
Uh, Keith?
Approve.
Ed?
Approve.
Lenny?
Approve.
Chair also approves. Application is approved as presented. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it. If you guys ever get a chance, please feel free to stop down.
Thank you. Okay, next application, please.
The next application is James T. Cookson. The applicant is the same. Location is AP eighty, lot eighty-seven, one-sixty-four Harris Avenue. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance and special use permit to construct a thirty-one foot-three-inch by twenty-two foot addition to an existing detached garage. The existing garage is ten feet from the property line where twenty feet is required.
Okay, is the applicant here?
I am here.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna ask you to give your full name and address.
My full name is James Thomas Cookson. My address is one-sixty-four Harris Avenue in Coventry, Rhode Island.
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you. Please explain to me what you'd like to do.
Um, so, uh, the, I would like to build an addition on the existing garage that is, uh, already on the property. Uh, the existing garage is a detached garage, and it actually is, uh, set back, uh, from the plane of the house. So the addition that I'm proposing or requesting would be built, um, attached to the existing structure at its, uh, front wall, if you will, and be brought, built forward. So when the addition is completed, the new structure, uh, and the old structure will be on a line that's parallel with the home. Um, and right there, you can actually see the property line that's in question. The existing structure was completed in the, uh, early seventies, and it was, uh, at the time, built ten feet from the property line, uh, not the current required of twenty for corner lots. So, uh, that is a brief overview of what I'm requesting.
Okay, um, so you're gonna maintain everything like it's required, other than the, from the twenty feet from the side lot line, you're gonna be going down to ten, but you already have ten, and you're just gonna continue it right to in front of it.
Correct, the garage is gonna be no wider. The addition is gonna be no wider than the existing structure, so for the entire length of the addition, it is gonna maintain that ten-foot distance from the neighbor property line.
Okay, going through this, um, what you're asking for, to me, does not seem unreasonable. Um, also, uh, the proposed use, uh, general characteristics surrounding the area, characteristics of this, of the surrounding residential neighborhood, this actually seems to appear to fit within the residential neighborhood. Can you take a look at this quickly tonight? I don't believe, uh, it does not appear that there's any hardship, uh, created by the applicant due to this. Yeah, I don't believe there's a motive here for financial gain. Uh, it's just a desire for additional storage space and not financial gain, and, uh, like I said, the property in the area, uh, most of them are non-conforming lots, and this lot appears to be, you know, it's your principal structure and an accessory setback, which, again, it's just a side lot, like the ten feet. I don't have a complaint with. The hardship for a dimensional variance, um, hardship for the applicant would suffer in not being able to build an accessory structure in the preferred location is more than a mere inconvenience. The existing development on the lot already allows the applicant to enjoy the legal use of the property. There are no reasonable alternatives to the proposed size of the structure to conform. Uh, the egress is not gonna, uh, change, uh. There is still ample plenty of off-street parking. Appears to be adequate trash for existing and the proposed use, which really doesn't, you know, it's not gonna change. Utilities, uh, should be adequate. No screening and buffering, I believe, is necessary on this. I do not believe there'll be any, well, there'll be no signs, no signs were presented. Uh, and the lot size and use of residential, it's compatible with the neighborhood. This doesn't comply to any industrial standards. The comprehensive plan, the district includes suburban areas which generally serve by the public facility, so therefore it's got all, you know, public facilities over there. It is compatible with the comprehensive plan. It should not create a condition that is inimical to the public's health and safety or welfare. And, uh, that's pretty much it. Uh, do any other board members have anything that they'd like to add?
I don't have a...
I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I mean, um, you know, as long as none of the neighbors are unhappy.
All right, we'll check on that. Russ, you have any problems with this?
No, no, not, not so much.
Okay, Lenny?
I don't.
Okay. Ed?
No, I have no problem.
Okay, let me open this up now to the public, see if anybody has any questions or like to speak for or against this application. Uh, can we open this up to the public at this time?
Sure, if, is anybody out in the public who wants to be heard on this matter, just please raise your hand, so I could bring you into the meeting. Uh, anybody going once? I don't see anybody. Ed, do you, sir?
I do not, sir. There is, uh, there are no hands.
Okay, since nobody would like to speak, uh, and we don't have nobody speaking against it, I, I, I propose that we, uh, make a motion to, uh, vote on this tonight. Do you have that, uh, would you like to make that motion, Keith?
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded. We vote on this tonight. I'll do a roll call vote on voting on this tonight. Russ Lockley, how do you vote?
Approve this presented.
Keith, uh, no, no, just not voting tonight.
Oh, uh, approve.
Approve, okay. Keith, Claudio?
Approve voting on it tonight.
Ed?
Approve voting, yes.
Lenny?
Approve to vote on it tonight.
Chair also approves voting tonight. Now, at this time here, I'd like to have a motion entertained to approve or reject this application as presented.
Make a motion to approve this as presented.
Ed, I have, has made motion to approve as presented and seconded by Russ, I believe?
Yep.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'll do a roll call vote. Russ Lockley, how do you vote on this?
Approve this presented.
Keith, how do you vote?
Approve as presented.
Ed Ionati, how do you vote?
Approve.
Lenny, how do you vote?
As presented.
Okay, Chair also approves as presented. Okay, application is approved as presented. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next application, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe you have to close out the meeting and open the meeting as the Board of Appeals.
Okay, good. All right, uh, this time here, I'd like to close the zoning board review meeting and open up the Coventry Zoning Board of Appeals. The attendance has already been taken, so we're all set with that.
Okay, so it's in regarding Kyle and Erin Bosworth, AP seventy-five lot one-hundred, Two Jack's Way. Appeal of zoning enforcement officer's letter stating that keeping of swine is not permitted.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, please give your full name and address.
Erin Bosworth and my husband...
Erin Bosworth and my husband Kyle Bosworth to Jack's Way in Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you both to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, sir.
And Jack, you also approve? Is that, I'm sorry, your husband's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, couldn't quite see him. Okay, uh, please explain to me what you would like to do.
Okay. So first, I just want to thank you guys. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the Board for your time tonight. Um, I do have a few comments in regards to the situation regarding our pet pig Tiger. We purchased Tiger from an adoption event at Tractor Supply Co. in Coventry. The farm that held that adoption event at Tractor Supply in which we purchased Tiger from as the direct sale of is Little Luna Farms, also in Coventry, Rhode Island. Little Luna Farms was actually seen here before the Board and received a final approval for the breeding and sale of miniature Juliana pigs, uh, in January of two thousand and twenty without conditions. Pigs have been classified as both livestock as well as domestic pets under Rhode Island state law. Little Luna Farms applied for a special use permit to request a kennel and that permit was approved with these animals classified as domestic pets. It was also noted during that meeting in January that families that purchased these miniature Juliana pets could keep them indoors or outdoors. One other note before I want to get into a few specifics about our Tiger is that Tiger is registered as an emotional support animal with the ESAC, which was done and approved by Dr. Rebecca Babcock Fornacci. So a couple of things about Tiger is you'll see him in the background here. Um, he lives inside. He goes outside to play. Um, he's litter box trained, so he does not have to go outside and refuses to on multiple occasions. He's crated at night or when we leave the house. He eats much healthier than I do. Uh, mo- most of what he eats is fruits and vegetables that are purchased from Dave's Market, which is the same fruits and vegetables that I give my children. He also eats pellet food twice a day. He has no smell, uh, since he's a vegetarian. He's hypoallergenic since he has hair and not fur, so my asthmatic daughter has absolutely no reaction to him. He loves to play outside, as I mentioned. Uh, he tries to play with the girls, although they don't like to share all of his toys, all of their toys with him because they tend to end up in his mouth. Uh, he enjoys plastic bags and bubble wrap, um, and he takes Cheerios and frozen peas in the form of bribery. He does a lot of things with us as a family, as I mentioned. I want to make it very clear, this is not swine. He is an animal that lives inside with us. He is planning to be in our Christmas pictures this year. He walks on a leash and a harness when he's not in our backyard. He used to take my daughter to the school bus stop each and every day. The school bus driver and bus monitor continue to bring him carrots or vegetables that they had each and every day. He's a very lovable animal. Um, again, um, he hates the snow or when the grass is wet. He does not go outside and refuses to. He's very stubborn. He loves to eat crabgrass, acorns outside. He loves the heat. We have our fireplace on for him all the time in the middle of the summer. Um, it doesn't matter because that's where he's comfortable. He pulls his bed in front of it and that's where he lays and rests to relax. He's super smart. He knows whenever my youngest is done eating that that's the only chair worth going under because she's the one that drops the most food. Um, he's always entertaining, mostly because it is very kind of crazy for most to see a pet pig walking around the house. Uh, he's made many appearances with teachers on school Zoom calls. He's made many appearances on my work conference calls. Um, really just, he brings joy to a lot of people, a lot of people in the neighborhood as well. Um, we've received several and provided them to the Board prior to tonight, letters from some of our neighbors um, who have received the appeal notification that we, uh, we had moved forward with. The letters include but are not limited to four of our direct abutters, uh, two houses to the left of ours, one to the right, and the house directly behind our property. All of these letters state that the homeowners are in support of Tiger. Um, some of the comments in those letters from our direct abutters state things like, my wife and I are very fond of Tiger. He's actually one of the reasons we ended up moving in six months ago. We took it as a sign that this neighborhood was right for us. The neighbor to the left of us stated that as a direct abutting neighbor to the Bosworth, sharing an open space in our backyards, we would be the most impacted by Tiger's presence. In our experience, you would never know he is there beyond the occasional friendly hello. He grunts towards us when he sees us. That said, he's quieter than many of the dogs in our neighborhood. The neighbor directly to the right states that Tiger is polite and well behaved. And the house behind us says that we've had the pleasure of interacting with Tiger on many occasions and it's always been a pleasant experience. My children really enjoy visiting him. And in the year since Tiger has joined the neighborhood, we have not noticed any changes that would make us question having a pig for a pet. In terms of his health, and I'm almost done, I promise, um, in terms of his health, he's seen at Big River Vet in West Greenwich. There's no required vaccinations for the state of Rhode Island. Iron shots and deworming took place prior to sale and he was recently just seen there a few weeks ago in September and received a clean bill of health. You see, Tiger is a part of our family and I want to make that very clear. While I can respect that not everybody may understand the fact that we have a pig for a pet and that that might seem a bit silly, our reality is that Tiger is quieter and easier than a dog, nicer than a cat, and much cleaner and honestly, much smaller than many of the dogs that are around us. So we come before you today to ask that our pet Tiger be considered as a domestic pet.
Okay. Uh, you do, when you purchased your property, you agreed to and signed a homeowner's, uh, association agreement?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the, the pig or the swine, however you want to put it, does not, is not included in that.
Correct.
This is something you signed and you agreed to when you purchased your home.
But in our opinion, he's not a swine. He's very similar to a dog, if not actually even better. And, and our situation with the HOA, I believe stands separate from the issue with the town. So I think we're here to address the town situation and we're working with the HOA and dealing with that as well.
Well, the HOA says no animal, livestock, poultry, or any other kind shall be raised, bred, or kept on any lot.
But he's not livestock. You're, you're not able to eat him.
Dogs, cats, but it lists what it may be kept.
And again, as an emotional support animal, I want to make sure it's, it's clear from an HOA perspective. There's, there's no bearing because he is federally protected from an HOA standpoint.
Well.
And I also, I just want to understand, why does the zoning board care about HOA matters? Aren't they separate?
No.
So, do, like, are, are you in the?
The deed restriction of the, uh, property you have purchased. Jane, can you help me out on this?
Uh, I think it, it, it is a private matter and we are dealing with the zoning ordinance, which is a public matter, but it does show that you had noticed and you were familiar with the regulations of the, uh,
We, we first received a note, we first received a note from our HOA stating that there was no issue. Um, I want to make that our HOA is in the process of being handed over to the Board and the, the builder who is in charge of it now has to clean up any loose ends before he can do that. So his, his letter, his second letter that he just sent is because he's trying to hand over the board. So at this time, we're asking for the Board to keep the matter separate because we are dealing with the HOA separately as he's in the process of trying to hand it over.
We also have a lot of members, we also have a lot of members from the community in the HOA on the call and a lot of the letters that you got are people from the HOA. If you drive around, you'll see a lot of save Tiger signs. So when he hands over the HOA, when, when Bob DeBois hands over the HOA to everyone here in the Oaks, um, it will quickly be removed from the HOA rule and it won't be an HOA issue.
Okay, all right, that aside, Carrie, um, is, are you saying that, uh, pigs are prohibited altogether in your letter?
Kit, we can't hear you, Carrie.
You're muted, Carrie.
Muted. You're muted, Carrie.
All right. Thank you, sorry. What? No, it's okay. Uh, so what I said in my letter was that I had first received a complaint regarding the keeping of swine on their property and that according to our zoning ordinance, they do not have enough property to keep the pig. They need a minimum of two acres.
Okay, so what we're talking about is they need a dimensional variance to have a pig because they don't have the adequate lot area to keep a pig on their property.
Can I please make a point to that because it, it doesn't specify anywhere in the zoning rules about a pig, all right? It says large farm animals such as cows, horses, and sheep require two acres. Large farm animals. And then there's a section about small farm animals and they don't require such acreage. And I asked Carrie, it doesn't say anything about pigs in either of these things. And she said, well, it's open for interpretation. So it doesn't specifically say that you have to have two acres for pigs. She's just interpreting that way. She's classifying him as a large farm animal. And I don't believe that to be the case because you guys have already classified them as domestic pets. Before this board, the hearing earlier this year, you classified these sales, the sale of these pigs as domestic pets and they're small. He's fifty pounds. He's smaller than most of the dogs. How are you gonna classify that as a large farm animal? Don't you think the two-acre rule is for a cow that needs to walk around and eat grass? Don't, don't we, do we see that as a difference? So we're, we're appealing the fact that.
Looking at, I'm sorry, may I speak? Um, I'm looking at section six B, it says farm animals.
Right.
Doesn't say large farm animals there. So this are considered.
There's two sections in the rule that, that talks, it's the permitted use section.
And then there's other farm animals. I can't, if you're gonna talk at the same time I am, I'm just not gonna talk.
There's a, there's a little bit of delay. I'm sorry.
Okay, and plus I don't even know who you are. Who are you?
My name is Kyle Bosworth.
Okay, all right, so I think what has to happen is you have to come before the Board and seek a dimensional variance uh, so that you can keep your, your pig, which is, um, on your property. It's not a use by right.
Okay, so, so can we go back to where you're seeing the, the, the permitted use section where you're saying you don't see anything about large versus small?
I don't see that, but I, I think we have a couple of things. One, we have an appeal of a letter. This isn't a final action by a zoning official. This is just an opinion, uh, uh, and advise, advising you that there's a problem. Until you get a notice of violation, I don't think you can appeal.
Well, this was the.
Secondly, there's no enforcement actions, just saying that you should fix this. You have to, to fix this problem. Until you get a notice of violation, I'm not sure you have a right come before this Board and appeal, basically an opinion of the zoning official. Secondly,
Carrie suggested.
There's a very good chance, what?
So, this is what Carrie suggested we do. So we're trying, a- again, we got a letter. I immediately called Carrie and this is what she suggests. So if this wasn't the appropriate actions, then how are we supposed to know?
Right, well, secondly, you can come back before this Board and ask them to, uh, grant you relief from the provisions of the, of the zoning ordinance, or you can go to the, uh, Town Council and ask them to amend it. Say this is a, a special type of pig that really doesn't fit in with the way you've got it written and we're being affected by it. And they can amend the zoning ordinance and say, you know, Julian pigs are, are unique animals. They're not like, like big pigs. They're, they're under fifty pounds or whatever they are and they can change the ordinance so that you can have it in your, your area. So, uh, you need to talk to your Town Council and you need to, uh, to consider, um, whether or not, um, do, perhaps you can come back and get it, some relief from the zoning board in the form of a dimensional variance.
If I may.
But, mm-hmm, go ahead.
Jane, do you have, I don't understand how they are entitled to a dimensional variance. Um, I, I, I don't see it. This use, Carrie interpreted this use as a no. So if they needed anything, to me, it's a use variance, not a dimensional variance. And if they apply for a use variance, they have to show hardship. I don't see the dimensional variance. I'm sorry to disagree with you.
No, I, it's a close call because it says that you have to have two acres to have farm animals such as cows, goats, horses, and sheep. So that is why I'm saying dimensional variance.
But it, but again, to that point, there's a whole nother section that talks about other farm animals that don't require it.
Okay, so can I interject for a second? They're talking about the size of the pig. We talk about the size of goats. We have large dairy goats and we have small pygmy goats. The, where there was an issue down in the eastern end of town where someone had, they actually had an acre and a half. They had two small pygmy goats. Based on the interpretation and the guidance of the higher-ups, those people had to rehome the goats because it did not fit with the ordinance. So where do we come in and where do we draw this line of, I have a pig that's fifty pounds and it's still treated, it still has to be treated by a vet that treats pigs?
I, I would say where do we, where do we come in and draw the line? Again, when, when Little Luna Farms located in Coventry came before the Board, they got approval, and I quote unquote, on January eighth of two thousand and twenty, the applicant proposes to operate a kennel for the breed and sale of small Juliana pigs as household pets in your notes. And that approval was done without conditions. If this was a problem for the Board, then you guys should have approved it with special conditions.
Different scenario.
So I didn't purchase it.
That, that was a different scenario.
I, when I find out that they're, the, the approval to breed and sell these miniature pigs who sleep in my house, it should be with certain restrictions or they should have some requirements in terms of selling.
You as a homeowner, do your homework and that's holding the Little Luna woman responsible. We don't have anything to do with whether someone sells you a pig or not.
Again, swine is not called out in the ordinance. That's the problem. The problem is, is when I did this research, I did look it up. And in my opinion, because it is open for interpretation, I categorize him as small because he is. So when you say that and you say that I need to do my homework, I did. Your rules and your ordinance was not very clear and now I'm asking for help because I love my pet.
Right, but your homeowner was very clear as well.
My HOA has absolutely nothing to do with this conversation. So in, in terms of the town and doing my homework, I did.
You say that your HOA has nothing to do with this. I just want to, for the record, say that those HOA docs have to get approved by the planning board. They're recorded, you know, the planning board approves the language in those before they get set in stone. So there was some town review of those documents prior to their interaction, to their getting approved.
Yes, sir. And all I'm saying when I say the HOA is again, we have an emotional, uh, support animal certificate and certification, which is protected in terms of the HOA that I had forwarded to you a few days ago.
I, I did get that letter and I did have, um, I do have an opinion letter from a solicitor on that.
Okay.
And we also had a conversation with the person who was the head of the HOA and he gave us approval, which we forwarded to you. And he has done the same thing for many other people that are violating rules, like people have vinyl fences up and if you read the fine print of our HOA agreement, you're technically not allowed to have a vinyl fence. It has to be either decorative metal or wood. But he's given verbal approval for that type of stuff over the phone and, and so that is fine. So again, our issue with the HOA is a completely separate matter. Then with the town.
I have a fish in a fish tank. That essentially is violating it as well. It stays inside. Nobody would know that unless I welcome them into my home and that is the same thing as my pet pig, other than the fact that I walked him on a leash to the bus stop. So is my pet fish also violating? It, it's the same thing. It has nothing to do with.
Not, no, it's not. It's a different use and it's a, a pig is a farm animal. I'm looking at the. Six, five, section D agriculture of the zoning ordinance. And it's prohibited in your zone. Having a pig is prohibited in your zone. The only way you can get around this is to go to the town council and ask them to amend the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I'm going to step in here now. Uh, I agree with Jane. It is prohibited. And I'd also, at this time here, like to see if there's anybody who would speak. In favor of this application, or anybody has questions on it, or any question, or anything at all. Is there anybody in the audience?
I do have a bunch of hands. I'll, uh.
There are a lot of hands. Russ, you going to handle it?
I'll handle it, sir.
Right.
All right, I'm going to bring the first gentleman in is Scott Beliveau. Scott, please unmute your phone. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir, I can, Russell.
All right, uh, now, Mr. Chair. If he wants to get sworn in to speak, are they get sworn in or no, they just speak?
No, they have to be sworn in.
Then you have to physically see him, correct?
That's correct.
Scott, are you able to do that, sir?
Hello?
Scott.
Yes.
In order to allow you to speak, the chairman needs to swear you in. In order for him to swear you in. There you go, sir. Thank you.
Scott, please give me a full name and address.
Scott Rittman Belvo, 65 Teakwood Drive West, Coventry, Rhode Island, 02816.
Okay.
Wait, what's your address again? 61, what, Teakwood?
65 Teakwood Drive West.
5, Teakwood Drive West, Coventry, Rhode Island. Thank you.
Okay. I can't see you knocking. Okay, uh, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to bring up?
Um, first of all, I mean, thank you for the opportunity for us to do this. As, uh, I've known Kyle and Aaron for many years, even prior, or prior to moving into the Oaks. Um, Kyle and I actually went to college together and, uh, started our young professional careers together back in 2004. Um, more importantly, um, we found ourselves a home here in the Oaks. And fortunately enough, when we found ourselves moving into the Oaks. Right across the street, essentially down the way a little bit. What did you know? There's Kyle and Aaron. Um, very exciting for myself, for them. And, uh, you know, anybody who, uh, essentially might know us and have fun with us. But that's really kind of needless to point. But anyway, I have two kids. They have two kids. They play with each other all the time. My two kids are, um, going on four years old and also going on, um, I have a, a almost four year old and I have a 20 month old daughter. Um, there's a picture of my 20 month old daughter cuddling Tiger, um, outside. Um, on the street, giving him a kiss right in front of our house. Um, you guys talk about how this animal or this farm animal is a. Is just that a farm animal. Yet, to Aaron's point, you guys also classified these as domesticated pets. So I have two issues with that. My main issue is that you're able, you're allowing individuals such as this farm, and sorry for not knowing the name of it and take a note. You're allowing this farm to sell these pigs to people like the Bosworths. But then at the end of the day, if there's a problem from a zoning perspective, you're willing to take that pig away from not only the Bosworths and their two loving daughters. But more importantly, everyone else in this neighborhood that has some type of relationship with Tiger. And to me. A father who has to then go to my kids to explain to them they can't play with Tiger anymore because he's no longer in their home? Or why did Kyle and Aaron and Frankie and Charlie move out of the neighborhood? That's something that I'm going to have to explain to my kids due to something that you guys already proved back in January. No disrespect to the board whatsoever. I don't know any of you. Um, there seemed to be a lot of confusion tonight about even some things around Palm Pub. And when we can make his, uh, things that are. When we can make. Easy choices for those types of things to happen for that individual to then go in there, purchase that establishment and do exactly what Palm Pub did. But we can't do something like this for a family pet. It is a pet. It is not livestock. I have pets. They're, they're dogs. They're not livestock, but they're dogs. Tiger is quieter than my dogs. Um, this is a pet.
Yeah, I'm just going to break it right there. One thing with what happened before with the. Selling of the pigs, that was a total different thing than this. Just totally different.
It may be different, but at the same time too.
It's just like building on, on different zones. All right.
Sure.
Reason why, I'm very familiar with your area. I lived up there for 35 years.
Okay. And, 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 and.
Your area was all two acres. That was all zone two acres.
Okay, but again, it goes back to.
Changed, okay, to what you have now. But it was also changed because of the HOA.
Mm-hmm.
So, so that was part of the whole thing.
I understand that.
While you have it. Okay, so I really want to keep this right to the pig or the swine right there and nothing else.
And, and great point, right? Because you keep bringing back the HOA. The HOA is in place. And to Kyle's point, there are things that are not right with the HOA. I have a vinyl fence. I received permission from Bob for that vinyl fence. These are two separate matters. And also too, I've been in contact three days in a row with Bob's lawyer, um. Down in Warwick, great name by the individual by the name of Sandy, explaining to me specifically what our HOA is in place for. And it's specific to our common areas. It's specific to water drainage. And that's really essentially it. And ultimately, at the end of the day. It would be up to myself to go after the Bosworths to sue them in regards to their pig. And that's really what I've been told from a legal standpoint.
Okay, thank you for that.
Also, at the same time too, um, I think it's very important to notice that Bob did approve the pig. They have a letter. Of, from Bob saying, you can do this. It is okay with me. Two days ago, they received something different. Why? Because he's handing it over to the board. He's handing it over to, to us. He's handing it over to this community and that's fine. But at the same time too, if he's trying to do something. Why this last minute? And you have him saying you can, and then you have him saying you can't. And to me, those two things are, they're oil and water. They don't go together. So ultimately, knowing what the legal stance is with our HOA and having the discussions with the current lawyer who is a. A part of this HOA who put this HOA together, they are two separate matters. And again, getting back to this, this is a family pet. I can't imagine them having to go through what they're going through. Quite frankly. I think there's a lot of people in this neighborhood who would agree with me. Maybe there is a few individuals who don't. And I would love to hear from them as well because I, more importantly, would love to know why we are doing this to the Bosworths. I understand that the Bosworths may have to go down additional paths. That are required by you for them to do in regards to zoning, but ultimately. This is their family pet. And. I don't think that we should be going through the process in which we're going through, especially because, excuse me. The selling of the, of the animal was approved. And it was also approved by Bob himself.
There was no selling of the animal approved by this board. That's what I'm trying to explain to you. Okay, is there anything else different that you'd like to add?
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anybody else out there, Russ, that would like to speak?
Yes, sir. I am going to. Um, I'm going to bring in the next person. Okay, um, I'm going to bring in a James Craig. Um. Let me allow him to talk. He is in now. And now I am also going to. Um. Remove Mr. Beliveau. Mr. Craig, can you hear me, sir?
I can hear you.
All right. In order for you to speak here this evening, I need you to show us a picture so the chairman can swear you in this evening.
Okay, let me figure out where I'm doing that. I'm sorry. I'm rejoining. Okay.
Where it says, start video.
Where? I'm sorry, my technical support is here. There we go. That was my technical support.
There you go, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, please give me a full name and address.
James Craig, 98 Teakwood Drive West, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, I'm going to ask you right, right here. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Please explain to me what you'd like to bring up.
Um, I, it just, along with every neighbor I've spoken with about this, I'm in complete support. Of, um, the Bosworths. Keeping and having the pig. Um, yes, I have also met the pig. It is certainly. Much more well behaved than most of the dogs in this neighborhood, including our own. Um. I, I just, I cannot begin to think of any reason they should not be able to keep this pet. Um, it, it's, it's that simple. It, um, and, and including the fact that. He was approved by. Bob the Boys, who is, uh, you know. He's the head of the HOA. Let's just leave it at that.
Okay, is there anything else?
I, I, that's, I think that's enough.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Okay.
James, one second real quick, um, just for the record for the board, you.
Wait a minute, no, no, no. I just, that be asked by us. You were waiting until it finished, all right? Okay, anybody else, Russ?
I don't think he heard you, Bob.
Russ?
I apologize, sir.
Okay.
What do you need? I did not hear you. I, I, I did not hear you.
Yeah, I need the next person that would like to speak on this application.
I apologize. Elizabeth Goodrich, I will now be bringing you in. And James Craig, I'm going to ask you to leave so I can, do you know how to leave the meeting?
Uh, my technical side.
There you go, sir. Elizabeth, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you. Are you able to turn on your, uh, video?
Uh.
Russ, excuse me, you have to actually promote them and demote them to panelists. Uh, each time. That's what you're having a problem with. I've been doing that behind the scenes for you.
Okay, I'm going to leave it up to you then.
Thanks, sir.
Can you see me?
We can, thank you.
Um, so I'm Elizabeth Goodrich. This is my husband Calvin Goodrich.
Evening.
We live at Four Jack's Way. We are the direct abutters to Kyle and Aaron Bosworth. And, um, the problem here is, you know, you're classifying, you're saying that Tiger is livestock.
Okay, I'm going to ask that. Hang, wait a minute. You both got to raise your right hand.
I'm so sorry.
And you both give, each name is?
Elizabeth Goodrich.
Calvin Goodrich.
Donald Goodrich. And address is?
Four Jack's Way, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, got to continue raising your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You state your.
So, one of the problems here that I see is you're trying to classify Tiger as livestock versus domestic. And if you look at the purposes of livestock, what an animal is used to do to provide work or potentially to provide meat. Bosworths not using Tiger to do anything of that. He is being used as a domestic pet. And it does look like when we review the town law that it is allowed. And my husband will be speaking in regards to that.
So yeah, um, uh, good evening, guys. Um, so I'm, I'm looking through the town bylaws and I'm seeing, um. Table six, one from, from 255 attachment one, saying that RR2 zoning is permitted for the recreational hobby educational raising of farm animals. Incidental to a household use. And, um, in the comment section of that table. Says farm animals such as, and you guys kind of repeated this before, but I'm, I'm going to point out that. I'm, I'm, I'm going to read a verbatim off the table. Farm animals such as cows, goats, horses and sheep shall we, shall be, uh, shall require two acres limited to two animals with one additional acre for each additional. Acre household at a minimum 50 feet from the property line. Other farm animals such as chickens, rabbits and ducks shall be limited.
Excuse me, I'm taking a verbatim record. You have to speak slowly and clearly so I can get every word.
Sure thing.
So I'm going to tell you where I ended and you can continue and read it at a normal pace so that I can take this down correctly.
Sure thing.
Reading off the table, farm animals such as cows, goats, horses and sheep. Shall require two acres. That's where I lost you.
Comma, limited to two animals.
You don't have to read the punctuation.
Okay.
Just read the words.
Limited to two animals.
Thank you.
With one additional animal for every additional acre housed at a minimum of 50 feet from the property line.
Thank you.
Other farm animals such as chickens, rabbits and ducks shall be limited to six animals if the property contains less than one acre. If property is greater than one acre, limited 25 small farm animals. All smarf, small farm animals must be housed a minimum of 25 feet from the property. So we have a classification of farm animals such as cows, goats, horses and sheep, which I think was stated previously. And then we have a classification of small farm animals. Um, or we have, sorry, a classification of other farm animals. And then we have a classification of small farm animals. So I, I think really the idea here is we're, we're trying to say that Tiger is a domestic animal. But also, he is a small farm animal. In accordance with a lot, with accordance with the, with the town laws and is permitted for use on RR2 zoning. So I've heard, I heard you guys say previously that, that, you know, pigs are not allowed, swine are not allowed. Um, I, I want to just kind of echo what everyone is saying is that. Tiger is the Bosworths. Pet. It, it, there is, it is their household pet. We are, as, as my wife said previously, we are their next, they're direct abutters, the direct next door neighbors. We share common area with them. Um. And as my wife has said, this, this animal is, is not a farm animal in terms of, of being used for, for work or, or for, um, or for, you know, meat is, if you will. Um, so I, I just. I think that what really needs to happen is I, I want to see how, how we're going to classify this animal. Either it's going to be a domestic animal, it's going to be a small farm animal, it's going to be another farm animal, or it's going to be, I guess, a large farm animal.
Okay. I thank you very much for your, for your input. Okay, Russ, do you have anybody else?
I do. Mr. Ozzy, could you, would you like to bring the next person in, please? Um, I'm going to, okay, I'll promote them to panelist. And. Who did we bring in? Sherry?
Yes, hello.
There you are, okay. Mr. Chair, would you like to swear them in?
Uh, I don't see him.
Uh, Cherry and her husband are right here. Um. It's Cherry Craig. I can see them both.
I see him now, okay.
Okay, sir.
Well, I lost him.
We see you.
Oh, I see him up on top. Okay. Can you, uh, please state your full name and address, each and every one?
Cherry and Peter Craig, C R A I G, 90, I'm sorry, 106. Teakwood Drive West, Coventry.
Okay, I'm going to ask you both to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
We do.
I do.
Thank you. Please explain to me what you'd like to bring up.
So I am a trauma specialist endorsed by the state of Massachusetts and trained. Uh, my husband and I actually did not even know that Tiger existed until a few weeks ago. When we were going around the neighborhood with our five year old granddaughter, who was extremely excited to see a pet pig. Just wandering around his yard, very quietly. We've since gotten to meet, um. Tiger and find him to be much sweeter, much nicer, calmer and more well behaved than, like other people have said, most of the dogs in this neighborhood. He doesn't go on our lawn. He doesn't leave his droppings. Um, he is very clean. But beyond that, looking at, as Aaron talked about, him being a support animal. That is something for me that is really important. And I just want to speak somewhat to that. I am going to read a little bit of what I had presented. Um, to a letter to the. of what I had presented, um, to a letter to the Bosworths. So just a bit of information, this was provided by the USA Service Animals Org. Emotional support animals help individuals with emotional disabilities such as anxiety or depression by providing comfort and support. Any animal can be an emotional support animal. Federal law does not require these animals to have any specific training and you do not have to be physically disabled to have an emotional support animal. Erin has stated that she has a letter documenting this. From my experience, I am a teacher in an alternative, uh, school in New Bedford, working with kids who come from gangs, have families whose parents are being deported, um, parents who have passed away recently from COVID. Every day they're living with all kinds of trauma in their lives. If they were so lucky to have a pet like Tiger, I'm sure that it would be a relief to them as well. That's what we have to say. And as far as the HOA goes, like it's already been presented, um, there's been violations all over this neighborhood when you read what's in the HOA. But we're supportive community here. And if these violations, any of them are not affecting us as neighbors, then we ask the board to give the same grace to the Bosworths as well.
Okay. Good point brought up. I thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, next I brought in Christos. I believe I brought Christos in.
Hi. It's his wife Stacy.
I apologize. That's okay. Stacy, uh, we can't see you. Is there a way you could help us out with that?
Do you see me?
I don't. I just see a C. I need to swear you in. There we go.
Hi.
Perfect.
Okay. Please give your full name and address.
Uh, my name's Stacy Thoreau. I live at fifty-two Tequod Drive West, Coventry.
Okay. Can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Thank you. Please let me know what you'd like to bring up.
I am, I, I'm here, you know, to show support for my friends and neighbors. I really feel for them and, um, I hope that the people listening to this who are also pet owners are feeling for their situation. I understand with zoning, it, it keeps trying to come back around to calling Tiger livestock. And he's significantly more than that, as everyone has mentioned so far. He's an emotional support animal. And as a friend and a neighbor in this community, raising two children in this community, I just want to make sure it's clear that all that has been going on is adding more stress to somebody who is having an emotional support animal to try to make life a little easier, especially during these tough times that we're all in, in this tough year. I'm just so saddened that, um, so many of my neighbors, which is the HOA, are in full support of the Bosworths. But yet, you know, we do still have a neighbor among us that brought on all this pain. I am curious who that is. I would love to know who that is. And why they are trying to break up a family. I can't imagine someone coming in my house and trying to take my dog out of the house. Uh, it's, it's almost unbearable. So again, just to bring it to the point of the HOA, it's intact to not break up families. The HOA, which is in the process of being handed over, it's there just to maintain property value. Tiger, he's not on the property. He's in the home. So he's not being housed on the property. He doesn't even exercise enough to use up two acres. Um, and I, I hope we can also look into the fact that maybe those zoning laws and, and traditional ideals of maybe Coventry used to be really livestock oriented. But now in twenty twenty and with emotional support animals, uh, it can be any animal that can live in your home on a federal level being supported. So I'd hate to see that on a town level, people are judging what's going inside someone's family in their home. Um, so that's my piece. I just want to show face and show that I'm here for them and I want to alleviate any additional stress that's happening this year amongst everything else that's happening to everybody this year. So.
Thank you very much.
Tiger stays.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Anybody else, Russ? Oh, yes. Okay. Next I'm going to bring in, uh, Allison. Let me promote her to panelist. And then I'm gonna allow to talk.
Okay. I do not want to hear a repeat of what I've already heard tonight in order to move this along.
There she is. Okay. Allison, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Hi Allison. Thank you very much. Uh, do you have anything other than what you've already heard tonight that you'd like to bring in front of the board?
Oh, I do.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, give your full name and address first.
My name is Allison Kelleher and I live at seventy-two Tequod Drive West, which is actually four houses down from the Bosworths.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you. Hey, what, what, what else would you like to bring up?
So I know a lot of people have been talking about the zoning board and I know you guys really aren't interested in that since we don't have much to say about that. We don't have experience with what the zoning board approves and what they don't. However, what I would like to say is that I have been in animal welfare for several years. I am well known with animal control officers, their zoning boards. I have worked at Province Animal Rescue League. Um, we've had this happen before and I just want to say frankly, with no disrespect to any of you, that most of the people that I have talked to, the president of the RISPCA, other towns, Smithfield, North Providence, Lincoln, um, Johnson, quite frankly, think this is ridiculous. And like I said, no disrespect whatsoever. Um, I know it keeps coming back to the emotional support animal. If you guys don't want to talk about that, that is completely fine. However, something that I feel like not a lot of people have brought up is not the definition of livestock within Coventry and those laws, but the definition of livestock universally, which is animals that are outside that are not indoors and usually housed in stables, pens or anything like that. Um, I completely understand that you guys think and are still going to call Tiger swine and that he's livestock. However, the universal definition of livestock is an animal that is basically house outdoors, whether it's an enclosure or not. This animal is completely indoors all the time. I mean, you can see him now. He's near the fireplace. Um, so if we're not, if you don't want to keep going on about emotional support animal and everything like that, that's fine. Um, but quite frankly, I have other towns on my side as well. And people hire up in animal welfare, animal control officers, zoning boards who just don't understand why this is still going on. Um, I understand that you guys have to do your jobs, but frankly, I think you guys are really going to be here all night. We're all in this for the long haul. Um, regardless of the HOA or not, we're all going to be there for them. We're all going to show up and this is really going to keep going on and on and on because it's just not fair. Your laws, your town laws or bylaws do not state this. The HOA is completely different. Like everybody said, we don't even have to worry about that because that is going to be resolved. But I really just want you guys to think kind of how far do you want to take this and really do you want to break a family up? Because quite frankly, this is ridiculous. He's inside. He's laying there.
But do you have anything different you liked that?
That was different. And yes, that's what I have to add.
All right. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Russ?
Russ, you there?
Think you had you there.
All right, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be bringing in, uh, Mary Scanlon, uh, next, uh, I'm promoting her to panelist. Mary, if you could, uh,
Can you see me?
There you go.
I'm back. I'm sorry. I had someone banging on the door.
That's not alone. All right. Mary, can you please give your full name and address?
Yep. Mary Scanlon, one oh eight Tequod Drive West, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you. Please represent me something that, you know, somebody else hasn't brought up.
Um, I don't have anything that anyone hasn't brought up. I'm here to support their animal. Thank you for hearing us on this matter. Um, and my brevity is not meant to diminish in any way my full support of the Bosworths pet pig Tiger.
Okay. I thank you very much for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to bring in, uh, Chris Poe. Chris? Chris, you're muted right now. Could you unmute?
Chris? Going once.
He's there. He's just muted and we don't have a picture.
Nope. Video involved are muted. He may be off.
Okay. Now, the only, if anybody can hear me, I don't know if you can put it out to the public, but I only want to hear testimony that is different than what came in front of us.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to bring him back over to attendee at this point.
Okay. Next I'm going to bring in Jen Ludwig, promote to panelist, allow to talk. Jen, I brought you in. Could you please unmute? There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is Jen Ludwig, or full name Jennifer Ludwig, and I'm at seventy Tequod Drive West.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay. And you're going to give us testimony on something other than what has already been brought up tonight?
Uh, yes, I'm already in agreement that the Bosworths are a good and kind family and I'm also in support of their pig being known as a family pet. So separately, um, I did want to check and see if the board could comment on something. Um, I noticed the solicitor, I believe it was Jane, um, and I apologize on the last name earlier, who, who questioned whether or not this should even be coming before the board at this point. Um, and whether or not they needed an official notice of violation or whatever the next proceedings were. I was curious to see, uh, whether, um, based off of the testimony of the, the people in the neighborhood, uh, tonight, that maybe the person who is, uh, originally filing the complaint, if they do not proceed, uh, will this need to go any further? Would the board be able to comment on that?
I believe at this time here, the board has to, but Jane can correct me, act on the petition or the appeal or uphold or vote against the zoning officer on the appeal. It's got to take an action either way. Jane, am I correct?
Oh, is she telling them to remove the pig in the letter? Cause I don't have the letter.
Okay, I guess we should have to go back to Carrie.
Carrie?
Yep, I'm here. So I received the complaint along with pictures of the dog.
I know. I just, I just need to know what did you tell her she had to do?
The letter said that I had received a complaint. Um, it also said that their property was RR two zone and farm animals, um, and the like shall require two acres and your property is point five five acres. They were to then contact me upon receipt of this letter so that we may rectify the station, this situation and failure to do so would result in a note, um, a notice of violation being issued. Um, and at that point, um, they, they did reach out to me upon receipt of the letter, but, um, being that nothing was getting resolved because it was a very emotionally, emotional subject, then, um, they filed an appeal.
Well, there's only ordinance says decision. I, but you haven't taken any final action. I'm just wondering if maybe we can, you haven't instructed them to remove the pig. You haven't.
Right, but let me just.
Issueed a notice of violation.
I didn't issue.
Can I speak for a second? Jane, if you take a look at two fifty-five thirty-one ten, which is appeal from decision of building inspector or zoning enforcement officer.
I've looked at it. Yeah.
Any person aggrieved by a decision of the building or zoning enforcement officer may file an appeal. It doesn't say aggrieved by a notice of violation. Carrie made a decision. The, the, the next course of action for them was to file an appeal with the zoning board, which is what we had advised them to do and what they consequently did. I believe that the correct course of action was followed here.
Okay. I just, I, I don't know that, um, I know aggrieved, but you haven't, you, you have a difference of opinion at this point as to the, what kind of animal this is, is what it boils down to. It's the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Which is a, is a question.
So you're saying technically that this should go, that, that Carrie should take this right to the council?
I think, I think this belongs to the council to, to, we should be looking at,
I don't disagree.
We should be looking at the other ordinances in other towns to see if they addressed this at all. Cause you know, this ordinance was written in the nineteen, first in the nineteen sixties, then updated, you know, I think the last up, I don't even know when the last update was, but it wasn't any.
What about the case law about the miniature horse in Cranston? I mean, they're.
That was their homeowners association problem. And I don't, you know, I know that case, but that was a case between the homeowners association and the homeowners more so than a zoning case. So it, and yeah, it invites a lot of questions like these miniature horses. A lot of them are barely fifty pounds. An emotional support animal, that could be a horse. There are all sorts of therapy programs involving horses for emotionally disturbed.
Right. And, and I don't disagree with you, but you and I both know that if we call a vet for our full-size horses or our miniature horses, it is still the same thing. I cannot put my miniature horse in my minivan and drive it to Coventry Animal Hospital. I have to either call Ocean State Equine or Tufts University.
I know, but that's different. This is about a new kind of pig that didn't exist when this zoning ordinance was enacted. This is a, this is a, it is a very unique animal. And I think it, um, you know, I think it belongs to the town council to, to narrow the ordinance so it, it addresses this specific type of animal.
Okay. Jane, I'm going to interfere here a little bit. Uh, my opinion right now is to uphold the zoning enforcement officer, but the action would be to refer it to the council. There'd be no further.
You can, you can say she's right and then.
Because she's doing it by the rules of the town, but no action be, but she's not requesting any action. So therefore the action would have to be taken up by the town council. How, how do the other board members feel about this? Keith Cludie, how do you feel?
I, I'm, I agree with you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, I believe it's something that the town council or should, 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 should vote on. This is a new animal and, uh, I agree with you.
Okay. How about, uh, Russ? Mark like?
I, uh, I think, uh, I agree with Jane that this, uh, this ordinance is very old and needs to be updated. Um, with several of the neighbors are saying that they've got dogs that are much bigger than, than Tiger is. Um, I've seen Tiger. I, I think he's adorable, but, um, it doesn't appear that we're going to, we're going to, I don't think we're in a position to make a decision tonight, other than I would send it forward to the town council. They need to look at this whole thing. Um, like I said, when they wrote this. look at this whole thing. Like I said, when they wrote this ordinance, I don't know how many decades ago, they were talking about full-size pigs. Quite ironically, there used to be a pig bomb right in that area when I was a kid. You know, it's kind of ironic, but
It is.
But it's two different, no, no disrespect, it's two different animals here. One is, you know, this is a domestic animal that just happens to be a very small pig. I would be inclined to, to send it over to the council for some, some, some work on their part to clean it up. And, and quite honestly, I can't see taking the pig out of that house. That, I don't care how that shakes out one way or the other, I just, I think it's wrong.
Well, you know, just to interrupt, I know we're doing a poll, but the appeal stays any action of the zoning official. So you can't really do anything while the appeal is pending. So we could just table this and give the town council a time to look at the ordinance and see how they want to do it. It's not really, it needs to be looked at by the council. It's not really this board's jo- job to amend the zoning ordinance.
I agree.
It's the council's job.
Okay, Ed Ionani, how do you feel?
I totally agree, we need to send it back to the town council. You know, we've come to the conclusion that the neighborhood is not against keeping the animal.
Can I, on that comment, please? The neighborhood, I have received, and it was put, placed in your packets, that I had received many phone calls, including three of them today, that people were against that pig being in the neighborhood because they were part of the homeowners association and felt that they followed the rules. The reason they did not come forward specifically stated by these people, they wanted to remain anonymous, was because they felt like they were bullied and they didn't want any issues because they live in that neighborhood. But I have a record, and like I said, it was placed in your packets of every phone call that they were against having the pig.
How many phone calls do you think you got?
Oh, I got at least fifteen.
I apologize, I didn't see it in my packet.
That's, that's fine, but I, and I didn't mean to cut you off, but you
No, it's fine.
All needed to be aware that there were multiple people that called and they were not in favor of this pig, but because the Bosworths were walking around, they felt, you know, really uncomfortable coming forward.
Totally understand.
All right, Lenny, how do you feel?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep.
With respect to revisiting the zoning ordinance, I would have no problem sitting down with the council, myself, the solicitor, you know, take a look at the ordinance. I agree the ordinance needs to be updated. I'd also like to talk to Jen and Caroline over in the animal control to get their input. I think we should revisit this. And I would be in full support of that, but I, I just don't want the people to think that this department acted arbitrary and capriciously and what they did, and they were persecuted against. I mean, we were following the guidelines of the current ordinance. And that's what Carrie did when she issued that letter. So I have no problem if the board doesn't want to act on the
Well, there's nothing to act on.
Well, there's an appeal, Carrie wrote a letter.
I would support her appeal. I don't know the other man, I support her appeal.
I, why don't we just table the hearing?
That's fine, I have no problem if, if the, the board decides to table the hearing. I would have no issue with that.
But I would think point-blankly, this would be why would we table or just refer it directly to the town council and let them make the decision?
Because do you, Bob, it's gonna, it's gonna take six months.
But that's the only way we can do it.
I'm just saying.
Because I gotta go by the rules of zoning.
If you, if you support the decision, and I agree, it, I don't see anything wrong with what the planning and zoning department did because they had an old ordinance to work with. But if you, if you, if you vote to say that, that that's fine, that we approve of this letter, we're denying their appeal, then it puts it on the table, what's the next step? If you table it, you give everybody a chance to take a look at this ordinance, see if it needs updating. It could be that the town council says we're not gonna do anything. And then you're not getting into the next step of enforcement.
Right.
See what I mean?
If I, if I, if I may interject one moment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We are at the end of this current council's tenure. If I may, I would recommend that you stay any kind of decision on this. I will put it up in front of the next council after the election and, and the decision can be made at that point, and then moving forward. And then at that point, if they make a decision not to go forward with the change, then you'll deal with whatever, you can reopen this, but in the meantime, just stay it until they have a chance to look at it. And that would probably be at the earliest, the new council, the end of November, December coming in, and then moving forward, as Russ said, it'll be a couple of month process to make a change in that, in that, on that ordinance. This won't be done quickly.
They're gonna have to refer that to the planning commission. The planning commission will have to opine and ponder on it. One thing, Jane, that concerns me is if, is, if we, if they don't act on the appeal, is, is there gonna be some state statute where a timeframe might elapse where it would automatically be approved because this board did not act?
It says that
What if I do?
They have to issue a decision, let's see, they have to bring the appeal within thirty days. Let me just look at the statute for a minute.
Thank you.
Okay, so the section four twenty-three says, "The board shall render a decision on any matters before or within forty-five days after the termination of the public hearing."
Okay, so that means we just, we choose not to terminate the public hearing here this evening?
Yes, we could continue the public hearing.
Fair enough.
Well, if we continue the public hearing to refer it to the council, to them to give us a guideline on it, we'd be covered by law.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I don't think they're gonna give you a guideline. I think the way I see this playing out is I see a request being made for either a new category being created or a more definitive, I, I see Julian pigs versus hogs, for lack of a better term, excuse my ignorance, a distinction
York's here.
Made between the two classifications and the zoning ordinance identifying the distinction and allowing each to be allowed in certain areas. That's the way I see this going down. I don't see them coming back to you with some sort of recommendation. I see a change being made to the actual ordinance itself, which in that time would probably not require any decision from this board. I, Mr. Manager, I see you praying, or I don't know if you're agreeing with me or not. Did you want to make a comment?
No, I, I just agree, Russ. It's just it's going, it will be a, it won't be a quick situation on the town council side because of the process that needs to take place as well as the, the delay of six weeks or so between now and a new council. So yes, if we keep this open, extend it, once the new council is enacted, bring this up in front of them to see if they want to move forward with it and, and issue, make some changes to it, or continue with the way it goes. At that point, it can be done either way. If they want to, they want to make changes, which again, I'm not, it's not my opinion to make a decision one way or another, but that would be up to the council on what way they want to go. But it should be put in front of the new council and see if they want to make changes in this ordinance. Okay.
I would also suggest that the homeowners association, once it's taken over by the members should have a voice on this. I don't know, Mr. Muzika, how you feeling that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, an ordinance change would affect the entire town, everything that's in an RR two zone and anything involved in it. That would be separate and apart from whatever the HOA regulations are in each of these developments.
Okay, so the town would not be able to supersede an HOA?
I'm not an attorney, that would be up to, that would, that would be an answer from Jane.
No, we could, that's a private association, we can't tell them what rules they have unless they're unconstitutional or discriminatory. So, anyway, I think what you should do right now is announce that you're gonna continue the public hearing to a future date to be determined depending on the, you know, how quickly the council moves and invite all the people that are in the queue to, to send their comments to the town council.
I agree.
Just for, just to, for edification there, if it goes before the town council, that will require a public hearing. So they will, everybody will be afforded the opportunity to speak at the town council meeting.
Yeah.
I like that.
I just wanted to let people know that.
Okay, I'm gonna take a poll of the so what we need is, we need a motion to set a date to be determined by the town council as a review of the zoning ordinances containing to this application. Am I correct?
I don't think I can give you a specific date.
No, you're gonna make a motion to continue this to a future date to be determ- to be determined.
Determined by the town council.
Not by the town council, just by by this board and the applicants.
By this board with
And, and the
Again, I think we're gonna need direction, we can't just leave it open to be by, from the town council.
You don't need
As it is now
I would, if, okay, put it down for a future hearing date in three months. To be heard on that, at that meeting. If, if it turns out that the hearing's not necessary because the ordinance has been changed, then the, you know, we can take care of it then.
Okay.
So for a date certain, that would be January sixth?
Yeah, and we may have to continue it from the January sixth date. But at least we'd have a date.
All right, let me take a quick poll, just quickly. Russ Lockley, how do you feel on that?
Okay.
Okay, that's what I need. Okay, Keith Claudio, how do you feel?
I, I, I approve the continuance.
Okay. Ed Ionani?
Yeah, I agree.
Lenny?
I agree.
I also agree. Okay, I need a motion on the floor to continue this to January sixth, two thousand and twenty.
One.
So that we can have an input from the town council concerning this decision. All right. You wish to make that motion?
I make a motion, we continue this till January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, Eddie made it, Keith seconded it, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on it. Russ, how do you vote?
Approve.
Keith, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ed, how do you vote?
Approve.
Lenny, how do you vote?
Approve.
Chair, how do you vote? That's me, I approve. Okay, this here will be continued to January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, when we have more input from the town council. Okay, the applicant? Just to let you know, that's how we handle it at this time.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, all right. Russ, do we have anything else to discuss?
That's it, sir.
Okay, I'd like to have a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, made by Russ, seconded by Keith.
Yeah.
All those who favor say aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming and thank you all for your patience.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.